What award?
We got restaurant in here from the
Oh, that's great.
Yeah.
I'll be a good your food is good.
How are you?
I'm making a hundred.
Alive and well.
Great job, Tom.
Our kick.
And so she wants to, uh,
Somebody got her air on in here?
And we we sitting here, just give me the four hundred.
Ew, they put the air on.
Let me see.
Uh, this can, it's kind of cold.
Hope that matter last.
Uh.
It feels like a draft. I checked, I checked all windows.
No, that's not open. Uh, what? Do you know where the water is? Mike, do they keep water down there?
Oh, we bring it up for some.
Hello, hello, how's it going?
Bring some from our refrigerator.
No, we don't have time now.
Somebody break.
So you're, uh. Thanks, Brett, that'll do. William, welcome back.
Thank you.
How's mom doing?
Good on you. I seen you. You're all good.
Okay, yeah, we're not speaking.
That's fine.
Hello.
Not as good as what you're doing. How you doing?
You got that message?
Hello, what message?
Did you see that, 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 that message?
Uh-uh, I ain't seen no message, but that's okay.
No, I'm talking about you sent me and I already was sending the link out.
Listen, listen, I just want to make sure you knew.
And we be at Sabanaw next week.
Okay, I won't be there, but I, I understand.
But you'll be in Detroit, Mr.?
I, I, I don't know, because I'm just chilling, so. You should see. There's another one right there.
Now, now, now that they have selected the place they, I, I don't think they have the contract.
This one ain't right me.
They are gonna have to bet.
What y'all got some dysfunctional experience?
Listen, that ain't my, ain't my issue.
No more. No more. No more. This is for you.
Okay, I talked to her in the passing, she said you had.
Oh, great, great.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the time is five fifty nine P M. We'll be calling the meeting to order promptly at six o'clock. Your meeting of the Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at six o'clock P M. On Tuesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, we are joined this evening by the Reverend Terry Montgomery of All Saints Episcopal Church here in Pontiac, Michigan. Uh, please, uh, welcome Reverend Montgomery, newly ordained for the delivery of the invocation.
Let us pray. Holy One, we are here this evening because we are created to live in community. We are here to discern and to do what is needed for the city of Pontiac to be a place in which its citizens and guests are nurtured. A place in which each one of us may continually grow and manifesting the full potential you have given. We welcome your presence among us and ask for your help to do our work in excellence and joy. In all of your blessed names we pray, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please keep standing for a moment of silence. Uh, we'd like to honor and, and remember those that our community has lost. Uh, reading the names of Omar Delvin Castillo, Mortimer Green, Sandra Smith, Willie Gray Thompson, age ninety-four, and those in your lives in your neighborhood, please join us, remember, remembering them with a moment of silence. Thank you very much, you may be seated, roll call Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Thank you, quorum being established, all members present and voting. Uh, can we please have a motion to adopt and approve this evening's agenda?
I make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. Uh, that motion is now before us, could I please have a motion to amend the agenda to add a council resolution proclaiming April two thousand and twenty-two is Arab American Heritage Month? And a second council resolution to schedule a meeting of the Pontiac City Council in conjunction with the Auburn Hills City Council, which would come, uh, before, uh, community, oh, it would be, it would come between community and economic development resolutions and then the finance.
I make the motion.
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman, that motion to amend is now before us, any discussion on that particular amendment? Hearing no discussion on the amendment, roll call on adding those two items, those two council resolutions to the agenda, Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Uh, yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, we're now at the main motion, are there any further amendments or, uh, debate on the agenda as amended? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on, uh, adoption of the agenda as amended, Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, uh, we are now at approval of the consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt it?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman, uh, that we adopt this evening's consent agenda, not a debatable motion, roll call Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, and for the community's benefit, that was us, uh, quickly taking care of multiple minutes, there have been many meetings and, uh, subcommittees of your Pontiac City Council working for you. We now arrive at special presentations, we're honored to have a number of special guests with us this evening. We first bring up to the podium, uh, the Honorable David Coulter, Oakland County Executive, uh, welcome sir, and please take it away.
Well, Mr. President, thank you so much, uh, council, it is wonderful to see you all, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to be here for a few minutes with you. Um, and, and just to share with, with the residents, uh, how this came about was that I did my state of the county address in Pontiac at the beautiful M one concourse and the new, uh, special event center there. Three weeks ago today, which, uh, because it was the third date, uh, that we ultimately chose, ended up falling on a city council, uh, meeting, and I felt really, really bad about that. Because I was here in Pontiac and I knew that it was going to be difficult, if not impossible, for the mayor and council, uh, by the way, uh, mayor, good, good evening to you as well, uh, to, to make it, and I felt very sheepish about that. But the president of the council was very kind in saying, uh, why don't you come by to our next meeting and, and, and give us an overview? Now, the, the, the speech was only forty minutes, so if you like, I could do the whole thing again. But in case you don't want me to do that, I really just wanted to sort of just give you very briefly an overview of what I talked about. But then, more specifically, some new initiatives that I talked about that I think are going to, um, be very helpful in communities like Pontiac, and I want you to be aware of them. Before I do that, though, I want you, uh, if you don't know her already, Ashley McBride is our community engagement officer from, for Oakland County. Uh, and Pontiac is one of the communities that she represents, and so the best way to get to my office or to find out more details about any of these programs is to get with Ashley McBride first. She, she is very responsive to your calls, she just got back from maternity leave because her and her husband just had a beautiful baby boy named Ashton, so we're excited to have her back. Um, but what I talked about essentially was this, although we've been very focused on COVID for the last couple of years and for good reason, I see you still have dividers and things and it's still part of our lives. Uh, we've also been planning in Oakland County for the day when we could look more forward thinking. And we unveiled sort of a five-year roadmap or plan for Oakland County, the things that we needed to lean in on to do to be successful as a county. And a big part of that, I just want to share, is to make sure that everyone in Oakland County, no matter what community you're from, has the same opportunities and resources as anyone else. And I don't know that that's always been the case, I think there's been underserved communities, I think we've seen communities of black and brown people, women and minority-owned businesses, our veteran community, and others, that have not always had the same access and resources. And so I talked a lot about how we're going to make sure, um, that the success and prosperity of this county is evenly distributed, and that's especially important here in our county capital, our county seat, which is, is Pontiac. Uh, and the other thing I mentioned, and I want, is that I want our residents to hold us accountable. So we're going to start to measure as we've never measured before, we're going to use data to drive our decisions and to use data to decide if these programs are working. And the results of that and all of that data is now up on our website. Now, I don't know, you know, how many nerds are going to want to sit on the web, the Oakland County, oakgov.com, uh, and go look at these measures, but I actually encourage you to do so. Because there's a number of things on there that we think are critically important for the county to move forward. And the, the data and how we're doing will be on our website and will be on it for as long as I'm the county executive, so that we can hold ourselves accountable and, more importantly, so that you can hold us accountable as well. But let me just, uh, I just want to briefly mention a couple of the new, newer programs or new programs that I unveiled three weeks ago that I think could have some special interest here in Pontiac. Number one, uh, is, is a program that we're calling Business Forward, and this is in our Economic Development Department. Now, it's great when you land a new auto plant like we did up in Lake Orion and we applaud those, or if you get an international company to locate here in Oakland County. But we know that our small businesses are the lifeblood of our, our economy here in Oakland County. More than ninety percent of the businesses and the people that work in businesses here work for a small business. So we've created a team of nine really talented individuals to be what we're calling the Business Forward Team. Uh, and Pontiac, by the way, has an assigned person, and I want to tell you that his name is Donald Snyder. Uh, if you haven't met him already, you will, he's a seasoned business consultant, he worked for the M E D C, uh, and the Oakland County Business Authority, and he's an expert at helping small businesses thrive and grow. Get the resources they need, the grants, uh, and how to navigate the economic, uh, environment. And so if you haven't met Donald Snyder, I'll, I'll, I'll tell him to stop by a meeting frankly, because I'd love you to all to meet him. But we're going to assign these people throughout the county to make sure, and, and, and the key thing here is, these people aren't going to be working at the county, they're going to be working right here in the community. They're not going to, they're not going to be based at the county campus, they're going to be based, Donald's office is going to be here in Pontiac, so that he will be accessible to you. So I invite you to meet Donald and take advantage of the opportunities that I think he'll be able to present to you. Uh, I also announced that we're creating a new, uh, revolving loan fund to help small businesses get the startup capital that they need. Uh, this has been often for a lot of the small businesses that we, small and medium-sized businesses that we talk to, access to capital is critical and they don't always know how to get it, and sometimes they're denied for various reasons. So we're going to have a revolving loan fund through Oakland County to financially support these businesses as well. Um, something that you may have heard me talk about over the past couple of years, because, uh, I saw it as a crisis before COVID and before I took office, but I think COVID has just magnified the crisis, and that's the crisis of mental health in our communities. We know that we have to do a better job of providing mental health services to our residents, uh, and COVID has only just magnified that. And so I talked a little bit about, um, eight million dollars in grants that we're giving to our nonprofit organizations that currently provide mental health services so that they, they can see additional people. We estimate they'll be able to see an additional sixty-six thousand county residents through that, those grants. Uh, but there's also going to be, uh, grant dollars available for our schools, so that they can hire the mental health counselors that they need and work right in our schools, because we've seen how critical that's going to be. So, um, you can find more information about that, but just know, and, and the, the final thing I would say is that we're going to eventually add mental health services to our, uh, Oakland County Public Health Office, uh, um, yeah, on the Pontiac campus, or in, in, it's in Pontiac, it's on the, it's on the Pontiac side of Telegraph. So in Pontiac, there will also be mental health services available at our public health offices, so I think that's really important. Um, an issue that I hear a lot about, I knew when I was mayor, I used to be mayor of Ferndale, if you don't know that, and a lot of times, people have a hard time keeping up with the repairs in their homes, especially seniors. And, and, and if we want to let people stay in their homes, keep their homes and age in place, it's important to give them the resources they need to do those home repairs. So we've added another two million dollars to our home repair program at the county, and so I want to encourage any resident, uh, it, this one is income-based, um, and so, uh, there are income require, requirements to that. But if you know somebody or if you are in that situation where, uh, you need a little help fixing, putting a new roof on the home or, or getting some things fixed up, uh, there's additional monies for that. Um, homelessness, I know a number of you on the council and many people in this community have been very active in the issue of homelessness over the last several years, uh, and, and, uh, once again, COVID has just exposed that. One of the issues that we found in COVID is we poured a lot of grant money and, and resources into our homeless shelters, but you know that there isn't a homeless shelter in Oakland County where a family can go, a homeless family can go. And so we're working with, and let me make sure I get it, the, the Hope Hospitality and Warming Center here in Pontiac, and we're going to do a partnership with them for what they call non-congregant beds at their facility, so that families can stay together when they're in that situation. And so that's a, a program I'm really excited to announce. Uh, and then finally, I just want to touch on something that, um, I think is really important, and that is, um, a, as we move into even further into the twenty-first century and the twenty-first century economy, uh, it is important that people have the skills and the education, uh, to get, to get ahead and to get the jobs of the twenty-first century. And so we've really leaned in on our workforce development areas, now you know, you might know there is a Oakland County, Michigan Works Office right here in Pontiac, but through those offices, we're going to hire what we're calling our Oakland eighty Career and Education Navigators. And so if you go to that office, you can get more information about this, if you talk to Ashley, you can get more information about this. But the whole goal of this is to make sure that people know how to get the resources to get into, into school, but the, the education navigators are particularly interesting, because when I talked to the president of Oakland, Oakland Community College and Oakland University for that matter, they both said the same thing. We actually do okay enrolling students, it's getting them to graduate, you know, life happens, their, their car breaks down, they lose their, their part-time job, they can't afford books, those sort of things. And so we're going to invest in that piece of it through this program, so that when people get into a school, we'll help you get into school if that's what you need, but more importantly, we want to help you graduate, because that's what it's going to take to get those jobs. And so that's another new initiative under our Oakland eighty umbrella, uh, that I unveiled, uh, three weeks ago as well. So lots of good things going on at the county, and I, 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 I hope you, you feel that some of those can be useful in this community, uh, and I look forward to, uh, working with all of you and continuing to work with all of you to make those successful. So with that, I don't know if you want to entertain questions or if you just want me to be quiet.
We'll entertain questions, will you entertain questions?
Of course.
All right, uh, we'll give the floor to each of our colleagues and the mayor, uh, first, District One's Representative Councilman Melanie Rutherford, you have the floor.
Thank you, I have two questions for you, what is the minimum and maximum amount of the loans that you're giving out?
For?
For the program that you have called Creating a Revolving Loan Fund?
The program is under construction now, so the final details of the revolving loan fund have not been, I, I had, I announced it, I have to take it to the Board of Commissioners, can get it approved and all the details, so, more to come on that one.
Okay, you talked about earlier that you are giving out eight million dollars in grants for mental health services.
Yes.
How does an individual who has a nonprofit in Pontiac become invested in it? Because sometimes people don't, they, we're told to go to the website, but it's not always user-friendly. So if I'm a nonprofit, how would I go about, um, getting the right information at the right time so that I can get the right result?
That's a great question, Councilwoman, and I guess I, I would say Ashley would be your link to that, because she can navigate the website and the applications and, and all of that, so, Ashley would be the perfect person for that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Thank you. District Two's Representative Councilman Brett Nicholson.
Uh, thank you for being here, I appreciate it. Um, I, most of Pontiac's most stable housing districts are historic. Um, they're all over our city, um, and there are restrictions, um, and many of the residents in my district specifically have challenges in living up to those historic standards with home repairs, uh, especially when we're putting in things like ramps in the front of homes, which don't always appeal, uh, to those, in Secretary of the Interior guidelines. Um, are there, uh, contractors that, that, that program also helps people get in touch with? That seems to be the biggest hurdle is finding the contractors that can do those historic repairs well, and, and would those be supported in those home repair programs?
Yes, and if, if residents or you yourself, um, call our Community and Home Improvement Division, in this program, we have a list of, of pre-qualified contractors that we have vetted and, and that understand the program and understand the kinds of things that we're doing, and we believe we have confidence in their ability to do the work. So they would be able to provide a list of those contractors.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
District Three's Councilman, Mikhail Goodman.
Uh, first of all, thank you for coming to speak to the city, uh, I know this is an, an extra trip for you that often hasn't been made by your predecessors. Um, first of all, I want to say, you know, obviously, uh, thank you for the work that you're doing, especially partnering with the homeless shelter that is in my district, um, at the Hope Warming Center. Um, because we obviously have to have an important conversation around homelessness and the, the ways to actually help people, uh, move through that process and, again, eventually not be homeless. Um, so I just want to say thank you for, uh, your help in that aspect, because it is something that's very near and dear to me, uh, especially, again, with the shelter itself being in my district, so thank you.
Last year, we approved a, um, a homeless strategy for Oakland County in partnership with, uh, State Senator Rosemary Bear, who helped us get the funding for that, and so now, this and other initiatives will, will come out of that to help make sure we're, um, helping our homeless population, thank you.
District Four's Councilwoman, Kathleen James.
Yes, uh, first of all, I'd just like to say, uh, Dave, thank you for being here, and, uh, all of the things that you've mentioned sound really good and sound like they will, uh, definitely be things that we can take advantage of. I especially, though, wanted to ask you about, uh, the additional monies for, uh, home repair for seniors.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that we're seeing more of now are seniors, uh, having to deal with more environmental and more climate change kind of issues. Uh, like drains on their property, uh, flooding on their property, um, you know, roots, you know, all kinds of things that relate to climate change.
Yeah.
So, uh, would the, would this program be able to address some of the climate change issues with, uh, people who would qualify for this program?
Um, and so, not to sound like a politician, but yes and no. So there are going to be some effects that are related to climate and the changing climate that, as you said, uh, you know, if it's drainage problems or those sort of things, that would qualify. But I would say that it is a larger issue, something that we're looking at at the county, you know, I, we, I hired the first ever sustainable, environmental sustainability officer to help us develop a comprehensive climate, um, plan for Oakland County. And we also know, by the way, uh, that many times it's, it's lower-income communities or, or underserved communities that have borne the brunt of that for a, a variety of reasons, and that's going to be part of our planning as well. So that's probably.
Going to be a difference.
Those larger sort of remedies, um, I would say, stay tuned.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
District Five's Councilman, William Parker, Jr.
Good afternoon, sir, and thank you for all that you've been doing for the county of Oakland.
Appreciate it.
My question centers around the mental health issue that you talked about, the eight million dollars in grants. You also spoke with the grant dollars for schools, and I was curious as how much of that eight million would be specifically earmarked for schools, and how will it be disseminated? Will it be disseminated through the, the school district or by an individual or entity of the county?
So the eight million dollars is going directly to nonprofit providers, so not schools, the schools is a separate component of that, and we're working with, um, the Oakland I S D and the Oakland County Mental Health Authority to find the counselors. Right now, there's a bit of a shortage of these folks, but our goal and the money that we've set aside is so that they can, you know, schools are strapped as well. Um, so it's, it's a partnership frankly, um, with those entities as well, and the school districts.
So the schools don't get a portion of that eight million, or how much for the?
No, no, yeah, no, it's not a, it's not a direct, uh, subsidy to the schools, it's, it's literally hiring the person to be in the schools and work with the children in those schools. Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Grimal.
Well, thank you for, uh, joining us, uh, Mr. Executive, and, uh, I just want to say it's great to have a, a terrific partner in the county executive seat. You and I obviously go back to our time, uh, serving together as county commissioners, uh, and, uh, really appreciate, uh, the partnership and the collaboration that you've already exhibited. I know that there's much more work to be done between the city of Pontiac and, uh, Oakland County, and really looking forward to working with you in the years ahead.
Thank you, you put some big ideas on my plate, and we're working through them, Mayor. Yes, bold leadership, and I appreciate it.
Mayor Coulter, when it comes to Oakland County's, oh, I'm sorry, Freudian slip, um, County Executive Coulter, um, when it comes to, uh, the county's role and, uh, partnership with downtown Pontiac's future and growth. Is there any long-term vision that you'd like to share that you're trying to move the county in a direction that is more, uh, more of a proactive partnership, um, that could potentially restore, uh, the very strong presence that Oakland County government had in, in the city center of Pontiac, Michigan?
Yes, um, yes, and this has been a little, so two years ago at my state of the county, some of you may have heard me say, I want to actually have some of our county employees working in downtown Pontiac. I think it's important, I think it's important when we talk to developers who are thinking about moving here, that we've made that commitment, that we believe in downtown Pontiac, and I, I just think it's the right thing to do. It's, um, it's been a bit of a, a challenge, uh, the, the Board of Commissioners and ourselves have had different ideas of what it should look like or what it, what services should come here. But I, I, I will reiterate to you today, and this is part of what, uh, Mayor Grimal and I have had conversations about, and I've had with some of the others, is that's still, that is still my intent, is to have our Oakland County, uh, employees at, at, at some rate and in some division when we can, when we can, uh, satisfy the, the commission's interest in that as well. But, um, that, that, we will do that.
Excellent, and a second question, uh, there's obviously a great deal of media coverage, but also, uh, Pontiac residential concerns when it comes to the viability of, of smart, uh, regional transportation system in light of neighboring communities' decisions. And is there anything that you can share with the Pontiac community in terms of short-term, uh, change or, or, or action that the county would like to proactively take to help put us on surer and more service-friendly footing for Pontiac residents and the entirety of Oakland County's?
Yeah, no, I really appreciate that question, I was really disappointed to see the action that, that Auburn Hills had, had taken, and we had lobbied them, we had, we had rallied some of the major businesses to send letters to the council there to try to convince them to change their mind and to help them understand the important, the, the critical importance of, of mobility and, and the smart infrastructure and of our, our county. Unfortunately, the, the, the city council, uh, didn't agree with that, but, uh, they are precluded for now from leaving the smart system, so for now. Uh, and there is, by the way, I should say, a smart millage that's coming on the ballot this, later this year, and so the Oakland County will once again be able to reaffirm its support, uh, for the smart system and the enhancements that they're making. They have a new executive director there that I think has a great vision and, and some enhanced services that I think if Auburn Hills frankly would have just given them a better chance to explain, they, they could have seen the value in. I will also say more broadly, because I, I got some questions after the state of the county that I didn't talk more about mass transit, which I've been a, you, you and I know, have been talked about this for many years, and I'm an advocate of mass transit, and I think a community like Pontiac would benefit tremendously. Uh, but it does require, uh, a robust bus service to support the infrastructure of a mass transit system, and so I continue to work with the leaders in this region, in Detroit and in Wayne County and in Washtenaw. McComb not so interested in it at this point, but, uh, and, and it's still my goal to put a, a transit plan before the voters, uh, while I'm, while, it, while I'm in this term as well. So on both of those fronts, um, uh, we're working to make sure that mobility and transportation in Oakland County meets the needs of all of our residents all over the county.
Thank you, and my final question, sorry to- And my final question, sorry to come at you with a lot, but
That's okay.
When reviewing the state of Michigan's 4.3 trillion or billion or a lot of money, when it comes to infrastructure, there are a lot of signature projects headed towards Grand Rapids, Flint, Detroit, various parts of Michigan. And I know the mayor is laser focused on putting Pontiac on a surer and more competitive footing so that way, at the state level and at the federal level, that we can as aggressively as possible be the beneficiary and recipient for some signature projects and enhancements that'll directly benefit Pontiac residents, but all of Oakland County. And so I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if we've made any headway there in terms of our bargaining and negotiating power and the ability to leverage Pontiac's unique opportunities with various projects that will require state and federal resources, of which there's a great deal more versatility than traditionally there has been
Yeah.
when it comes to that funding.
Yeah, we've been in contact with the governor's office and the budget folks throughout this process. And so we have our wishlist in front of them, and that includes things that came from the mayor's administration's office as well. One of the things I would focus on, I talked a little bit about this in the state of the county, but one of the critical areas that we're leaning into in terms of infrastructure is to make sure that we have clean water and that we have sewer and we get rid of the lead lines, the lead service lines in Oakland County, which are throughout, especially in older communities like the one I live in and in Pontiac, replacing those lead service lines so that we have clean drinking water. So working with the drink, the Water Resource Commissioner, Jim Nash, and his office, water resources and water infrastructure will be a big part of our ask, but there's a, there's a number of other things that we've, that we've put before the legislature and the governor that we hope to be successful on.
Thank you.
Other colleagues, final opportunity. Councilman Goodman, then Councilman Rutherford.
Also, I do want to say also thank you for the help from the county side in terms of, in terms of transit, because when it comes to the Auburn Hills meeting, I think I was, I think the first one to bring it to the council president in terms of that situation. So I personally will be happily to speak with you and Ashley and anyone else at the county level who want to help on the protection and hopeful expansion of transit, especially in Pontiac. I think we're positioned extremely well for it. And again, it's a conversation that we need to have because it affects all parts of the county, not just Pontiac.
Yep.
So thank you again.
Thank you.
And the last question, Councilman Rutherford.
Yes, the previous administration had sit back funding for housing and for rent and COVID funds. Are you familiar with that? It happened in the last, in the 10th council, it was sent back to the county.
Oh, the previous council?
Yes. So the reason why I'm asking this question is, do you think those funds, I think it was $533,315, I think that's the number, that was sent back to the county? Would that funding ever be returned back to us for different programs?
I don't know the details of that, Councilwoman, I'll be honest with you.
It's about, you know, for
I know the issue, I'm aware of the issue, but I don't know the details of where that money resides or
It was sent back, so I'll, let me, let me
It was sent back for the county to distribute.
Right.
Correct?
Excuse me, so it wasn't the council, it was sent back for the county to distribute. So I was wondering with that funding, because I want to be correct in what I say, so I won't be accused of that. I just want to make sure, I wanted to know if that funding was going to be returned back to us.
So I'm not aware of any initiatives that's in that direction, so, but I don't want to misspeak because there may be things going on in the, that would come out of our community and home improvement area where they monitor that. And I would want to touch base with them before I gave you a specific on the details of that. But, but I know that the larger issue was, should the county manage the CDBG and other funding dollars, or should the city do it, right? Because the county will do it for cities. In fact, when I was mayor, we ended up having the county do it for us because we did a cost benefit analysis and figured they could do that. But I know that Pontiac has, over the years, debated that issue, whether that's something that you want to manage internally or not. And just so you know, the county is neutral on it. We don't, we don't get any, we don't gain anything from it, we don't take a cut of it other than the expenses of doing it, and so we're neutral on whatever the Pontiac Council and mayor and administration choose to do with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Grimal.
On that note, Mr. Executive, and I know you and I have talked extensively about this, and you understand our strong desire to bring the CDBG dollars back in-house
Yep.
and have them administered by the city directly. And my sense is that a majority on city council support that approach as well. I know that, as you know, that we're working with HUD to try to facilitate that, and my understanding is that you're very comfortable with that approach and will support that occurring based on HUD's comfort level, making sure that Pontiac has the competency to bring those funds back here for direct administration by the city.
That's absolutely correct. We don't have any skin in that game. There's other communities, Royal Oak, Southfield, a number of them that do that themselves, and that's, and like I said, when I became mayor, we did as well. We ended up turning those services over after our internal review, but that's, that's up to the community, and I'll support whatever decision that you want to make on that.
Thank you. With that, thank you, please give a warm Pontiac round of applause to Oakland County Executive David Coulter. Thank you. Our next special presentation, the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office, Racial Justice Initiatives, and we have their office's racial justice advisory council. You have the floor. Good evening.
Thank you. First, I just want to say to Dave, thank you so much. I'm an educational advocate, so to hear that there are funds or staffing that will be made available to the schools is phenomenal. And I think most of the people in the Pontiac community know Kimber Bishop Yankee as well, and I've helped her with a couple of people who are experiencing homelessness. So, so that's a huge initiative. So thank you for that, too, when we're in on that. So thank you to President McGinnis and the council, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and to all of you for inviting the Prosecutor's Racial Justice Advisory Council here tonight. My name is Stephanie Kreider. I am, so generally, people think I'm an attorney, so I'll say upfront, I am not an attorney. I am actually a member of the community. And one of the, one of the wonderful benefits of the new administration that's at the Prosecutor's Office is that they firmly believe in working with the community. And actually, thanks to one of your own residents, Ms. Veronica Taylor, there are several people who are representing the concerns and needs of the Pontiac community on our council. We did start last year, it's a combination of professionals who have either legal expertise or a background or passion in criminal justice. There are a number of members of our council who have actually lived experiences of being formally incarcerated, and so they bring that perspective to the table as well. When we got together, we were charged with a homework assignment and asked to pretty much tell the Prosecutor's Office, what does the community want? What are our needs? What should we focus on? One of the first things we wanted to do is not just have a tour and go around like most politicians do and, you know, give the rhetoric that most people don't want to hear. And so what we agreed to is that we wanted to deliver services. So the first thing that we did was come up with the idea for a resource fair. It was a justice resource fair that was held in Pontiac at Murphy Park, wonderful location, by the way. And we had various services throughout the community, and we, you know, it's something we're going to do again. We had a phenomenal time. Pastor Parker is actually one of the members of our council as well. He and his congregation and many of the leaders in the faith community in Pontiac were very instrumental in helping us to carry out that event, so we're looking forward to that again. This year, what we talked about was shifting in the direction of focusing on specific areas. So when we talked to our council members and they came back with ideas, just like our county executive and other communities and organizations are talking about, mental health would be a focus for us as well. Why is the Prosecutor's Office focusing on that? Because if you talk to the assistant prosecuting attorneys, the APAs there, they would tell you that many of their cases, unfortunately, are involving people who have mental health needs. And, you know, with the way that our state is set up, you know, I won't go through the history of, you know, our governor who removed some of the facilities that have been in place, you know, it's just a difficult situation when we have people who get caught up in the system. And so we want to figure out how we can best advocate for those individuals and help out. And when I say help, I don't mean talking points. I mean, one of the things that the Prosecutor's Office did at our resource fair was create a clothing closet. We physically brought clothes and had people donate clothes. That's something that's at the Prosecutor's Office. Why? Because sometimes you have people who, whether they have mental health challenges or financial challenges, they don't have the appropriate attire to wear. And as we all know, the system may not, should not be that way, but it makes a difference in the way that you look and the way that you speak when you go to court. And so that's an example of one way we actually want to deliver real services that are needed in the community. We also have a youth engagement subcommittee, and with this subcommittee, one of the things that we've been talking about is actually something that APAs have been talking to the community about on our calls, and that is, is that the Prosecutor's Office is very serious about inclusion and diversity. And Pastor Parker can attest that when we got on the calls, I mean, I got chills because I heard attorneys speak with so much passion and excitement, not just about following one individual leader, Karen McDonald, our prosecutor, but about the culture shift that has taken place at the Prosecutor's Office. And I've told people, you know, there's no way I can really articulate the feeling that I get when I'm on those calls, but, but I'll say this, I truly believe that we are shifting from prosecution to justice and that that's the office of justice. And if I had to explain to people who they are and what they stand for, that's what I would say, is that they're the office of justice. When these individuals came forth, one of the things that Chief Assistant Prosecutor David Williams did was appoint a co-chair. So when they asked me if I would chair the council, I then received Shannon Coman King, who is my co-chair, African-American attorney. We have very specific conversations about what that means for the Prosecutor's Office. So when you think about youth engagement and needing to see people who look like the community in the Prosecutor's Office, it's not only happening, but we want children to see it's happening. So we're having conversations now about, can we create a shadowing program so that the, so children can actually come into the office and they can see attorneys who look like them, and they can figure out, how do I, how do I create this pathway for myself to get involved? So that's another huge initiative that's not only real time for today, but looking long-term in terms of how we can kind of shift the narrative for many of our kids who don't really know where to turn and what they are able to do. And I think all of you probably have heard about Judge Kwame, who is a new judge, he was on the Prosecutor's Council before receiving that judgeship, so that, that's a huge accomplishment. We also have a Second Chances Subcommittee, and the Second Chances Subcommittee is actually looking at a number of opportunities, and one of the first things that we're doing is an expungement event. So I think all of you should have a packet that includes a flyer. We also have a press release. This press release gives a brief history of the Prosecutor's Council, members of our current members of our council, and why we're getting involved in this initiative for April. April is Second Chance Month. I'm sorry?
I said, that's right.
Yes, it's Second Chance Month. And, you know, I, I'm somebody who's formerly part of ministry, I was a lay minister, and I can tell you, I get excited when we talk about second chances. I know that the Pontiac community gets excited when we talk about second chances because that's just, that's who you are, that's your spirit here. Actually, and if I can give a plug to Pastor, Pastor Peyton, I was at the redemption service on Sunday. My husband, who's here with me tonight, we were there, and that was a phenomenal event. I don't know if who else was in the room, but, I mean, I don't know that I've come down from cloud nine yet, and, and to me, that is like the epitome of Pontiac. That's the spirit that comes from this city. So I personally just want to thank him and thank all of you for all of your work in this area, providing second chances to the community. But our expungement event is on April 30th. It will be hosted in Pontiac at United Wholesale Mortgage at the Sports Complex. So when you come into that facility, you'll make a right, and we actually have a court that has been designated. We are doing pre-registrations. As you can see on the flyer, there is a deadline for that, April 8th is the deadline. We have over 200 pre-registrations to date. I'm not even sure that we've fully launched it over a week, so that's pretty exciting. We are partnering with Safe &amp; Just, phenomenal organization when it comes to providing expungement events. We also have a partnership with the AG's Office, with Oakland County Clean Slate. They are helping us with the iChats and the background criminal investigations that we need to do to kind of pre-screen ahead of time, and then screening will take place when you come to the event. We also want to make sure that we're being inclusive. So though we want a smooth process with a pre-registration, we are not closing the event out to people who are walk-ins. So we will have an area for pre-registration, we will have an area for walk-ins. We do have volunteer attorneys, not only from the Prosecutor's Office, who they're helping in the beginning of the process with the AG and other individuals, but we are also working with community members who are attorneys. We are also working with law school students. So if you are an attorney, you know a law school student, they like to get experience doing expungements, they are more than welcome to come. You do not have to know how to do it, we have training set up. We had our very first training on April 1st that was provided by Safe &amp; Just, and we have a member of our council who will provide two additional trainings. So if you're interested in that, please contact us, you can let me know while I'm here. You can email racialjustice@oakgov.com. That's racialjustice@oakgov.com. Let us know if you'd like to volunteer, and we will get you set up for training. We also are doing something a little bit different in terms of expungement fair. So Shannon and I are, we've had people tell us, you know, rein it in just a little bit. Initially, we wanted to have, see if we could get all the courts there so that people can get the expungements done at the event. We are actually working with your very own Judge Cynthia Walker, and so we hope that we will be able to make that happen at the event. But with that said, we are trying to provide help in the beginning and help after the event, because oftentimes what happens is that people will come to an expungement event, they'll get stuck. They don't know where to go next. They don't know how to articulate what their needs are. Sometimes maybe they're not even prepared for court. So what we're asking is that we also get volunteer attorneys to not only help them with the court process, but the nuances of that. So what's the verbiage that you should use when you go to court? How should you dress? What your attire should be? Maybe there are wraparound services that you need. So we're looking at potential community partners right now so we can have those wraparound services available. What got some of the people in the situation, right? So we don't want to just make sure that they can get it expunged, but how can we help, help you to not have that situation occur again? So we will have Michigan Works Pontiac there, they will have a table to talk about employment. I'll be reaching out to a clinic that we had at the resource fair, they have free services for their healthcare clinic. So that's how we're thinking about this event. It's not just a one-time encounter that we'll have, but we hope that this will be something ongoing. Councilwoman Rutherford, in a meeting, did mention that this is something near and dear to your heart in terms of doing expungements, so I did relay your message to our prosecutor and to our team at the office, and we're interested in looking for partnerships. You're actually going to get a call soon about that. I forwarded your information. We're very excited. And then the very last subcommittee is also something that I think is near and dear to the heart of this community, and that is violence prevention. So if you talk to David Williams, he is on fire. He is excited about what we can do when it comes to violence prevention. And so our team has had conversations about how we can partner with the city of Pontiac, how we can partner with programs. I have experience, and my husband, my husband is retired from Michigan State Police, and he and I have knowledge and experience with the ceasefire program. And so for those of you who are familiar with that, Detroit Police Department does use ceasefire as a program. It came out of Chicago, there's a lot of data to support that that's an effective program. David has also been talking to another organization and getting information about that program. We have our council meeting tomorrow, so I would hope to have more information for you. Pastor Parker has graciously extended an invitation to his committee meetings, the law and courts, and so I will make sure that we have updates that will be made available there as well. But that's something that we're looking at too. And just on a, a personal note, my family has experienced tragedy more than once. I had an uncle who was murdered and my brother was murdered in 2000, both at the, by gunfire. And so I understand the pain in the community and the hurdles that we face emotionally and everything else in terms of getting over that tragedy. So I make a personal commitment, you know, to do what I can to help you and certainly the prosecutor's office is there as well. And that's, those are our four subcommittees.
Thank you. I, I know that there are questions. Council President Pro Tem William Carrington, you have the floor.
Well, thank you. Definitely, what you set out is a very important work for this community and other communities around Michigan. So I thank you for that. One of the questions, do you know exactly how many numbers actually, how many expunges have been done in Oakland County since Karen McDonald has, has taken?
That's a, that's a really good question. I can make an attempt after I leave the meeting to find out. And I say that because on our council, we have members of Michigan Liberation. They're known for doing tons of expungement. I mean, there, there are other expungements happening with fraternities and sororities as well. And some of them are a part of that initiative too. But there's been thousands, you know, that-
Oakland County, basically, I'm familiar with Michigan-
Yeah, with, okay. I'll, I'll see if I can find out for Oakland County for you, but we definitely have a lot of people who participate in expungements in the county. I was actually approached by a couple of churches at the Resource Fair and we were told if you want to host something at our facility, we're open to you coming in there in Oakland County. One of the churches is in Royal Oak.
And my, my second, well, it's more of a statement. I commend you when you said that you got several different attorneys that plan to volunteer and, and, and work on this. Because one of the main concerns is that it's taken too long. From once someone gets their paperwork in the system, it's taken almost a year till they get to expungement. And that's, that's becoming an issue because guys are getting frustrated with the process and they more or less zoning out the process due to not being enough lawyers working to, to get these expungements done, so.
Yes. That, that's true. So when we, we had a few meetings with Stephen and Elizabeth with the Oakland County Clean Slate Team. And most people probably don't know this, but Stephen is the only attorney there. And so he manages hundreds of expungements. And so, you know, I'm sure if he were here, he would say, you know, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm working, doing my best to try to push that through, you know. But the beauty of it is, is that we actually have this process. And, and actually on our flyer, you'll see that there are new eligibility requirements here that will allow more people to get expungement. So we're anticipating that even more people will come. But certainly if there are ideas, you know, to take back and share in terms of how to-
Definitely more attorney. Stephen is a great attorney. I'm just going to put that out for the community. And he works hard, he's going to fight for you. So once you get into the system, I just want guys in, in women to understand that they can't give up about the process because it's going to happen-
Please don't.
If, if, if you got, if you meet these criteria, so.
Please don't. That, and that's a really good point because one of, so when our volunteer attorneys make the call after the process, that's one of the things that we want them to do is say, hey, don't give up. We know there's still a hurdle, we know you still need to, you know, mail these packets in. If we had the funding to give people the $50 they need to send everything in, we would give it. Trust me, we would do it. We wanted a one-stop shop to try to deliver it all. But we will be there to do more handholding than is typically done so that we can make sure that people don't give up.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford.
Two questions. Is there a way, if we had private donors who wanted to donate towards paying the $50, that they could do so at the event? That's the first question.
So, thank you for that. I, I will find out for you. So here's the challenge that we have with the Resource Fair is that we are not currently, as a council of 501(c)(3) or any other tax-exempt entity. And so we don't have our own bank account. And what many of our sponsors did is that either they delivered the products to us or they paid for services directly. If we're able to get approval for something like that, what I would envision is maybe there's like some sort of voucher or something that would go to the individual. It wouldn't be funneled through the prosecutor's office. But I can definitely ask about that and that would be, that'd be amazing if people could get assistance financially.
So my second question is, you're familiar with mental health court, correct?
So I'm not as familiar with what all the courts do, but I know we have the Treatment Court and we have another, a, a number of divisions. Today, I actually had a meeting, I was at the prosecutor's office today, had a meeting. And we're talking about maybe bringing some of those divisions to the event because there's still a lot of people who are not aware of what's available. And there are free services available.
Right. So the reason why I ask that is because there are only two mental health courts in Oakland County. That's at Detroit and there's at Oak Park. And I was wondering, how do we galvanize that so that we have that in our court system? I know that it's a substantial amount of cost, but just to delay that back to Karen McDonald from me.
Yes.
We definitely need to have the mental health court at 50th District. There are so many people who are being marginalized and sentenced to prison and/or jail who really truly need to be at mental health court first. So I just wanted to delay that.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I picked up on that as well at the committee meeting. And so that was one of the bullet points that I listed for the call with you. So please talk about that. And, you know, one of the, so, you know, Dave can certainly speak to this too. And I don't know if you all saw the press conference on this, but funding was made available for Conviction Integrity Unit. And so through, the lens that I have as a community member looking into the office of the prosecutor's office is that when they see that there's a need, they're always pivoting and shifting and trying to figure out, how do we meet that need? And we have a county executive who's saying, okay, what do you need and how can we get the funding? So I appreciate you, you know, saying that, especially while David's here. You know, that that's a need and, and they'll certainly follow up with you on that.
Councilman Goodman.
So first of all, I want to say hi, Stephanie.
Hi.
It's really nice seeing a friend on the, on the other end of the, especially when it doesn't live in Pontiac. I, I appreciate you coming so much to, you know, bring this to us from the county prosecutor's office. Because I also know how much passion that you have specifically in this area, having worked with you now for, it feels like much longer, but it's probably only been about two years. But to have you being, you know, doing this work so heavily and bringing this to us and, you know, for a community that so much needs it. I just want to say obviously, you know, thank you so much for all the hard work that you do, coming to explain this to us, bring it to our, to the community so they are aware of it. And again, all the hard work that you're doing along with the other people on here, along with Pastor Parker. I just want to commend you and give a really big thanks from myself, the community as a whole, and especially council.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Councilman Parker, whose name has been invoked a great deal. And it's worth pointing out, when we as a city council expanded and reorganized our city council subcommittee, Law and the Court Subcommittee, of which he chairs, has been taking a very inclusive and proactive look at the way in which we look at law and justice in our community. And so we're grateful for that. Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Brother President. He just said everything I was going to say, but I'll start as a step. I want to thank you for coming this afternoon, explaining it to, 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 to the public. Because I just believe nobody can explain your issue better than you can explain your issue. And one of the things we want to make sure, and we're trying to make sure, is that the work that the prosecutor's office is doing ties very good with what the, the courts are doing. And so if you can mold those two together and we can get some reports on what's happening at both ends, at both ends of it, we can probably let the community know what's going on in regards to the mental health issues, the violence that is taking place, the sentencing process that is taking place. There's so many things that we can put together and come together and talk about and keep the, the community informed about. And we might be able to figure out how to get some of them needed donations to help people out to get some of the things expunged. And so thank you for coming. I look forward to seeing you at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor Grimal.
I just want to thank you. You know, having had an opportunity to work with you on a few things over the course of the past year or so, I know that you have a tremendous heart for people, for Pontiac. And that's reflected in your leadership and your service through the Racial Justice Advisory Council. So thank you so much for, for your work and the work of Walter and the work of so many other great community leaders, Veronica and Pastor Rodney Tolbert and Regina Strong and so many others from across this county. Representative Brenda Carter, I really appreciate everything that all of you are doing. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to have the floor. My final question slash comment invokes the name of two of our Pontiac residents who were wrongfully convicted over 25 years ago and have just been exonerated. I wanted to get a sense from, and it's worth pointing out, we've had colleagues on the city council have interest in our city council taking up resolutions to more inclusively welcome them back and acknowledge and grieve with them for the, so much of their life that has been taken from them. But that'll something that, very appropriately for Second Chance April, that will probably be on our next week's council agenda. But you invoked the Conviction Integrity Unit with the county prosecutor's office. Is there anything that you can share with the community in terms of sort of work that's being done to ensure that anyone that has been wrongfully convicted still has, there's light at the end of the tunnel?
So I'm not, David's actually probably more familiar than I, than I am with the entire process. But tomorrow, actually, Pastor Parker and I will hear a presentation. Beth is the lead for the Conviction Integrity Unit. She will be presenting to our council so that we can get a better understanding of what she does, the process from beginning to end. I've had people approach me too, saying, hey, how can I get help, you know, with my situation? So that's also something that I want to know. But what I can do is if you're interested in having a presentation on what that, what the Conviction Integrity Unit does, I can certainly take that back and make sure that we get information, whether it's delivered by me or Ask for Beth or David. I do know, I'm not sure who spoke with Betsy Haig on the council, but I do know that the prosecutor's office will be scheduling a date so that they can come and then they're representing the various divisions. They'll be giving that presentation to you.
Excellent, thank you. Others that wish to have the floor? Give a warm Pontiac round of applause for Ms. Stephanie Kreider-
Thank you.
-and the Honorable and great justice counsel. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Recognition of elected officials, I see the Chief Judge of the 50th District Court, the Honorable Cynthia Walker. Round of applause.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mr. President, Pro Tem, members of the council, mayor, deputy mayor. My job is going to be very brief this evening because Ms. Kreider has said it all. I was here to talk about the expungement fair. She's given you the details. I just want to really encourage people to, if you have children, grandchildren, whoever may have these older convictions that are preventing them from getting, you know, substantial gainful employment, you really need to have them come here. There have been expungement fairs in other places in the county, several in Southfield. We have not had one here in, I want to say, more than 10 years. And at that point, the laws were different than they are now in terms of what could be removed from a record. So I commend the council for bringing this to Pontiac and making sure that people are covered. I do want everyone to understand, I don't mean to be Debbie Downer, but I just want the expectations to be managed because expungement is a process. Just like getting through to a conviction is a process. And I was on a call, actually I'm still on the call, with another organization, including the state court administrator who just indicated the Attorney General's office is overwhelmed with these expungement requests. And part of what happens is, once the process begins, they have to go through the AG's office or Michigan State Police to make sure there's no other areas out there. They are overwhelmed. Courts have been setting the actual hearing to finalize the expulsion, expungement about three months out. That may be going a little bit longer. But I think the AG's office is aware that people are trying to get these matters cleared up and so they should because of the criminal justice reform that allows it. So I just want to encourage people, sign up in advance, if at all possible, by April 8th because it does allow pre-screening, which will make the process go further. If you have 200 registered already, that is phenomenal. But for people who are not able to register in advance, they can appear that day. But it is a process. And what we're talking about in this, the attorneys will be giving explanations and assisting on many different levels. But the convictions that we're focusing on are Oakland County convictions in this expungement forum. But people will get information on how to deal with other areas outside of the county as well. So I just thank you for the ability to speak and thank you, Ms. Kreider. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Judge. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Oh yes, Judge Walker, definitely thank you for coming and sharing that with us. You made a great point concerning making sure that the, the community understands the process. The Attorney General's office definitely has to sign off on it as well as Michigan State Police has to run their fingerprints and everything and sign off on it as well. So, so just to say to the community, sometimes you, that three months may become six months. But people do not give up. That's what I'm saying. It's, it's about a process and it will happen if you, if you, you got what you're coming, based on the criteria, you definitely will get an expungement. Thank you.
Thank you. Others, other elected officials that wish to be recognized? With that, we are now at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. First, Councilor Emeritus Kermit Williams.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, President McGinnis and Pro Tem and the whole entire council. It's good to see some of my former colleagues here today. I wanted to come and address the agenda about item number six, which is the Baker-Tilly budget amendment that you will be asking for tonight. I've tried to stay away from this place. You guys have the ball and I'm trying to let you run with it. But I wanted to make sure that the record was straight. It says in item number six that you engaged two firms in order to do this as the city. And I know this came along before this administration was here. The previous city council did not authorize Baker-Tilly in any way, shape, form, or fashion. I actually have their engagement letter dated May 17th, 2021, that says that they should not exceed $65,000 in payment, which was not approved by the council. And so I'm thankful that the new council has done forensic audit and getting that taken care and squared away. But I need the record to accurately reflect that the previous city council did not authorize the engagement and definitely not $130,000 spent on bringing CDBG back in-house. And so the conversations that you are having with HUD and the work that they did was great, but it was no longer authorized by the city council. Anything over $10,000 should have came to the city council. And so by my calculation, they're $120,000 over what they should have done as far as engagement for administration. So I would ask that you would defer this for one week to get a resolution that accurately reflects what really happened in the process, that you would look at the minutes. As you can see, the previous city council before the pandemic actually took this item off of the agenda. It never was properly bought back by the previous administration. So any engagement or work that they did in that order was brought illegally by the city charter of the city of Pontiac. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I know that you and trust that you guys are doing your research, but this was something that happened before you got here. And so I wanted to make sure it was clear that this money was not authorized to spend. And that's why the forensic audit that you guys have engaged in is so important to the citizens of Pontiac. But please don't try to clean up bad work with citizen tax dollars that should have never been authorized by the council. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next, Desmond Wright Glenn, item seven.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, esteemed councilmen, fellow citizens. I come before you gravely concerned. As I believe we all should be, at the action this administration and council appear poised to take as it pertains to the implementation of the Flock camera system within the city of Pontiac. First, let me say to continue to refer to this proposed system by the name Flock is disingenuous at best. Flock is a company. They make two systems, one known as Sparrow for HOAs and civilian use, and Falcon, which is for law enforcement use. So Falcon also has a connected network feature that according to their website, and I quote, "Your agency is not limited to cameras you own." You can connect with- You can connect with adjacent agencies and nearby privately owned cameras in neighborhoods to extend your reach." This connected network is known as Talon. So it troubles me that we, as a city, are prepared to place yet another surveillance weapon, a Falcon with its talons, in the hands of Mike Bouchard, a sheriff who, to this day, refuses the call by many, including the former mayor of this city, a call I hope is echoed by the current one, to use body cameras on his deputies. He cites privacy concerns, concerns that innumerable law enforcement agencies have solved, figured out, and done away with. The Falcon system is rife, also rife, for potential abuse, as there is nothing in the current resolution barring the Oakland County Sheriff and its deputies from exporting the footage captured by the Flock system to other software systems for facial recognition analysis that we know is incredibly problematic for communities of color. Now, the Oakland County Sheriff can simply export this footage, and by filling out this form, digital image analysis request, and send an email to a lovely woman named Kelsey MacArthur, who I spoke to this afternoon, they're able to now analyze any kind of footage for facial recognition. Your Ring cameras, our Falcon system. So when we heard last week that that's not what the system does, that's not what the system does, that's not necessarily true. So this form has two checkboxes that are concerned to me. The first says facial recognition. The second says watch list entry. I urge you to vote no on this resolution, or, if you are insistent upon it, to include a resolution, non-binding, of course, to request Mike Bouchard implement body cameras, and to put a binding resolution in place preventing Oakland County Sheriff deputies from using this loophole. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Darlene Clark.
Good afternoon. I'm speaking as a resident for the city of Pontiac. This young man has put it very clearly. What this system is going to do is going to target every black male and female, if there's even a question to what's going on. I've asked you to please reconsider this system. This system is not a very good system. A lot of cities have turned this system down. The system was put in predominantly black neighborhoods, cities that hold a high ratio of black people. So please reconsider this. Our kids is already facing a problem, and the problem is not with the criminals, it's with us allowing the criminals to come into the city of Pontiac. We need to clean up our own house before we can clean up anyone else's houses. We need to stop placing the blame on what the criminals is doing and actually putting a stop to them and try to clean it up. We need to get more, if you don't have the staff, get more staff. Staff, code enforcement, where these people can hide out. These people, on every street in the city of Pontiac, you can knock on the door and a neighbor would tell you where the drug houses are at. A neighbor would tell you who's right and who's wrong. Pontiac is too small. It's been, people have been here too long. I ask you, please to reconsider, and he's giving you the facts, according to their contract, what's really going on. Reconsider not bringing the Flock system in there. And to put it very clearly, like what he said, it's not called just the Flock system. That's a glorified way of allowing you to accept this system.
Thank you. Councilman Emeritus, Gloria Miller.
Good evening. I won't stress on, I was going to speak on that gentleman, I don't know where he went to, but right on target. I came for that. Good looking out for the city. I want to touch on, first of all, anyone know me, I'm about to clean up the city. The city look a mess. It's dirty, there's trash everywhere, every district, not just one, all. And I'm getting calls about going into special pickup, you know, as councilperson, not trying to tell you how you do the job, but it'd be good if you nancy saying, because seniors don't get on internet and stuff, they don't keep up with that. That's going to have to be up to you as a councilperson to get that to them. And with that being said, Bay Street, by Harrington School, Mayor, Mr. Parker, please pay Bay Street by the school. Your school, our tires is about to blow. Would someone do something with Bay Street? Okay, and my next, the next thing I want to discuss is, you know, you got something on here in regards to the trial period. Item number seven, resolution to approve the implementation of the Flock. You know, that's a trial period. I wanted to mention to you, young man, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, no disrespect. We did a trial period on Perry Street, and it was supposed to be a trial, and it's still there. Okay? So you can't hold M.D. to their word, because they're not, I left counsel being, not a creep of their word. You can see the tape, if you go back and pull the tape, you can find it from the administration, you can see whether the previous council, the 10th council said no, only for six months, it's still here. I think that's all I wanted to mention. Clean up the city, get code enforcement out, Mayor, clean this city up. It's dirty. Thank you.
Thank you. President McGinnis, that's all from public address, I mean, Agenda Address.
All right, we are now at discussion items. The first is related to taxation, a discussion on revenue sources and the cost of road improvement.
All right. Thank you, Council President. I will be brief. This is just a discussion item, but I came over here so that I could have the clicker. So as you know, we have entered into the budgeting season, and so we're going to have a number of discussions and presentations that we will be bringing to you to make sure that everyone understands all of the items that go into the budget. This is a very long process, but tonight specifically, we wanted to discuss two things. We want to discuss Proposal A and the Headley Amendment. So these are laws at the state level that really affect not just the city of Pontiac, but they affect all cities, townships, and villages, and how we are able to collect taxes. So let's start off with Proposal A. It's not working. Frank. All right, so with Proposal A, it's really simple. Back in 1994, the state passed a law that said property taxes were going up entirely too fast. And the way that was happening is, as properties were appreciated in value, the taxes associated with them went up. So the state came up with a number of different items they would use to track the actual value of the property, but tax it at a different value than that. So you have the true cash value, which is the actual selling price, the agreed-upon value of the property from a willing buyer and a willing seller. You have the state equalized value, which is, you know, one half of that. And then you have the assessed value. The assessed value usually is somewhere close to the state equalized value, but that number can change based on inflation and other things. So that assessed value ends up also becoming what we're going to call our taxable value, right? So that is the number that the state uses to determine how much the property can be taxed and what's going to be used on that millage rate. Well, what happens with Prop A is a property's base value or its taxable value is set, wherever it is once it's sold, and then it can only go up by a set rate or inflation, whichever one is lower. And the state equalized value of the property will increase based on the actual property sales around the property. But if that property itself doesn't sell, its taxable value only creeps up that small, small amount until the property actually sells. So that actually stagnates the growth in the value of a community. So that's what Prop A did. And it's great as a property owner. It is awesome as a property owner because it means that once you buy your property, you have locked in the fact that your property is not going to appreciate in taxes over the period of time that you own it. You can refinance it, you can do all kinds of things to it, it's not going to appreciate, and you're not going to be like, oh, my God, all of a sudden, because the people across the street sold their property, my property is now worth more money and my taxes have gone up. Prop A stops that from happening. But Prop A has a really unintended consequence that we all found during the Great Recession. Prop A stops properties from increasing in value, it does not stop them from decreasing in value. And so during the Great Recession, not just Pontiac, cities, villages, townships across Michigan lost a huge amount of value in a very short amount of time. But because of Prop A, that value could not be recouped quickly. It will take us decades to get back to where we were. Next slide, please. So that, we just went through all of that. Next slide, please. All right, so Prop A does not exist in a bubble. There's also this thing called the Headley Amendment. Keep going. So in 1977, again, there was this issue with the idea that cities, villages, and townships were making too much money, that we were overtaxing the population. So the Headley Amendment was passed. And what the Headley Amendment did was, it said, okay, look, we understand that there's this thing called inflation, and property values go up, and your community should not get a windfall in new revenue because properties just went up in value. And so what the Headley Amendment does is it says, whatever your tax rate is, that tax rate will be rolled back proportionately after a series of adjustments to deal with inflation. And so I left up in there Oakland County's number over time. So if Oakland County voters in 1978, the voting millage for Oakland County was 5.26 mils. Because of Headley rollbacks, based on the fact that property values have gone up over time, the actual assessed millage rate in Oakland County now is only four mils. So over that portion of time, they've lost a whole millage point worth of taxes. Can we go to the next slide? And so what does that mean for Pontiac? And I guess I should have made this slide a little bit bigger, but if we come to 2018, in 2018, the millage rate in Pontiac was just over 18 mils. Our taxable value was just a little bit over $700 million. And so that netted us $13 million in taxes. The next year, appreciation, inflation, property values increased. But because of the Headley Amendment, our tax, our actual tax levied was rolled back, just slightly, but it was rolled back, which meant that we actually collected $120,000 less than we would have had the Headley Amendment not kicked in. And so then the next year, we didn't have the appreciation, so we ended up collecting the same amount of money. But then you can see in 2021, we had a very large gain in appreciation of taxable property, such that the Headley Amendment cost the city over $800,000 in taxes that we would have been able to collect had we not had that rollback going all the way back to 2018. So why am I bringing all of this up? I'm bringing all of this up because as we go into our budgeting sessions and as we look forward, one of the things that we're going to have to consider doing is asking the voters to do what is called a Headley override. And so that is amendment, that is a vote that goes out to the public and says, hey, we agreed back whenever it was to set our millage rate here. And because of appreciation over time and the Headley Amendment, our millage rate has been forced to roll back year over year over year. And so we would be asking the voters to reaffirm that original rate that they all agreed to and not have that rollback, and then we would have this money still in our coffers. And so why is that important? Well, with those funds, you could use those for many different projects that you've heard about. You've had citizens ask about doing more cleanups. You've had citizens ask about doing more road patching. There's all sorts of things that we could be doing that we are not because the Headley Amendment is forcing us to roll back. So I'm going to go back over to the seat there, but I just wanted to be here. I thought the clicker was going to work. And that's the whole of this, and so now it's open for our discussions. Thank you.
Okay. President Pro Tem Carrington.
Yes, Deputy Mayor, just thank you for that, definitely. You know, you opened my mind to our tax system, but I got a question for you because from my understanding, the Headley tax was definitely based on making sure municipalities don't overtax their citizens. And my second point is, is that why would we be interested in going out for a Headley override when we have American Rescue Funds right now that we can use to fill the gaps in our budget?
So that is a great question, and we can definitely use American Rescue Act funds to fill some of the gaps in our budget. There is a, there's a statutory limit for how much of those funds you can call lost revenue, right? And so if we think about the Headley Amendment, in a sense, the Headley Amendment creates lost revenue every year. So the ARP dollars are a temporary Band-Aid for lost revenue, and the Headley Amendment is going to create new lost revenue every year if we don't ask the voters for an override. So that's why we would ask them for an override, because of the time value of money and the accumulation of all of the projects that we are not able to do, even though the voters agree to that actual level of taxation. The Headley Amendment says, yeah, but property values went up, so you just can't collect as much as you would have.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Councilman Rutherford.
How are we going to roll this out so that the citizens don't feel like they're being taxed, like make them feel, in the simplest terms? What we don't want to happen is that all my taxes going raised, how are we, how are you as an administration going to roll this system or program out?
Thank you, Councilwoman. That is an excellent question. This is actually part of us rolling it out. The first thing is, the Headley, the Headley override is something that the citizens have to vote on. So this is, the administration, the council cannot unilaterally say, we are going to do a Headley override, and it is what it is. We have to inform the public, we have to let the public know the pros and the cons of doing this. It has to go on the ballot, and then the public decides that they will or will not ask for or approve a Headley override. And so this is just the first part of having that conversation of saying, you know, what does our budget look like with an override? What does our budget look like without an override? I will say that the budget that we will be adopting in June, that will go into effect on July 1, will not have a Headley override in it. If we were going to do that, that would need to be on the May ballot, and it would have needed to be on the May ballot. I think the language is due next week for the May ballot, so not going to have it for this year. But when we do it, it will be in effect for the following year. So if we were to go, if we were to have it on the November ballot, it would be in effect for the budget year that we do, that comes up in 2023. So that's why we're starting these conversations now.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you, Vice President. And I want to thank Deputy Mayor, because we've had, thank you for teaching me Taxation 101. I think I was one of your students in earlier conversations that we've had for taxation for dummies, because I didn't quite understand it as a property owner. I was just trying to make sure my property didn't get taxed anymore. So thank you for explaining that to me. But my question, my question becomes certainly as we look at our, what seems to be a gloomy picture of our taxation dollars that are available, is there anything that we can ask of the business community to incorporate them in how we recoup some of these dollars to those that may have been given a exorbitant tax write-off?
Yeah. So again, Councilman, I love the question. So again, Councilman, I love the question. And so as we have come in, we've been in office, you've been in office just over 90 days. One of the things that we started doing in the past two weeks is going over all of the different tax breaks that have been given out to businesses over time. We're pulling all of those contracts, reviewing them, making sure that the businesses are actually living up to what's in those contracts. In the instances where they're not, we are contacting them, sending them letters, following the information in there. All of those contracts have periods and times for cure, which means that if any, if either the city or the business doesn't live up to what's in that agreement, it's up to the other party to reach out and say, we've noticed, you're not in accordance with this contract, please, you know, move yourself accordingly. And then if they don't, it has remedies that we can follow. So we are taking the first step of finding out who is and is not in accordance with the contract and then asking for the remedies.
I think I have another question, but I'm not sure if this question, how does this affect the dollars that, as an example, that we could recoup through Blight Court?
So Blight Court is different. That's not taxation. But with Blight Court, those dollars are not necessarily recouping. Those are actually penalties and fines for not doing what it was that they were supposed to do. When we are actually recouping something, it would be an example of if we have a property where the grass has become tall, and we call it noxious weeds. And so we go out and we tell them, hey, your grass is too tall. They'll actually get a notification that says, you have 14 days to remedy this situation. Otherwise, the city will remedy it for you. And when the city remedies it for them, we then send them a bill. And that bill, if they don't pay it, ends up getting put on their taxes. That's how we recoup it, because either they will, when it's time for them to pay their taxes, they will pay the taxes, which includes that bill, or it will go delinquent. And once it goes delinquent, and then of course can end up being tax foreclosed into county and/or city hands.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson.
As a very recently made politician, my question surrounds, when we are potentially having to go back to the citizens over the course of this or next year, as it will roll into future elections, to talk about other opportunities or other community groups that might come asking for millages or opportunities as it relates to taxing. I think the gravest issue and the biggest dollar price tag we've got on our hands is the roads and potentially water systems and sewer systems and things like that. So infrastructure-wise, if we were to, what is the benefit of bringing to the voters this very complex question that will take a very unique education campaign, in my opinion, for them to wrap their arms around, because we all are still in that process as well, and we're so neck deep in it? Or something like an infrastructure millage?
Absolutely.
That'd be a much higher dollar amount than the potential $800,000 price tag. Doing both, to me, would be very shocking to the taxpayer. Doing one would be very confusing. Doing the other seems a lot more tangible to me.
So I don't believe that it is a either/or. I do believe that it is a both-and, and the value of the both-and is, when we go out to the voters and we say, we would like you to do a special millage for roads, and it is one mil, two mils, however many mils it is, and we tell them how much that millage is going to capture. And we say, okay, based on the capturing this, we believe that we will be able to, you know, do whatever over the course of the next five years, 15 years, whatever that period is. The Headley Amendment directly pulls from our ability to do that, because the Headley Amendment stops us from collecting money at the actual rate of inflation. And what do I mean by the actual rate of inflation? The Headley Amendment, just like Prop A, holds revenue growth to a formula that is X not to exceed. So if the real inflation rate, you know, based on like the things that are happening right now, if that were to happen and we had gone out with a millage for roads, we would effectively not be collecting the money that the citizens thought we were going to collect, and we would not be able to pave as much road as they wanted us to pave.
So with that concern in mind, I think the thing I would be looking for as this progresses into discussion or action items would be language. Like, what would the language look like, right? If we have to do a ballot initiative, there has to be, or there has to be language surrounding it. But with that language, that to me is the most confusing part, is, you know, we've seen some ballot initiatives go out where the yes and no seem counterintuitive. The language doesn't seem, it seems to mean something different, or it's confusing. I would hate to put something on the ballot. I mean, I understand. So if we said, hey, we needed $100 million to redo all of the streets in Pontiac, we'd actually probably have to ask for $140 to make up for the problem that the Headley causes, which would be not what we, to actually recoup the 100, which would just also be us chasing our tails. But I think for me, what would make it more processable would be that language and what that would look like.
Absolutely. And again, tonight was the beginning of a discussion to say, you know, this is what taxation looks like. These are all of the weird things that happen behind the scenes that property owners don't care about. They just know that, you know, my taxes last year were roughly $1,000, and this year it's roughly $1,005. The interesting thing is that, you know, you see these large gains and losses. When you annualize it to just one particular property, it's not that large swing. It's that large swing because there are 60,000 residents in the city. You know, when you look at all the different, and it's not just 60,000 residents. I don't have the actual parcel count in front of me, but it's all of the different parcels, and then it's all of the different personal property. So a lot of that tax is actually not paid by residents. It's paid by businesses and the personal property that's taxed. But again...
Not small businesses.
Not small businesses, because you guys get an exemption.
Don't be scared about that.
By the very, very, very large businesses. Yes.
Councilman James.
I've got a couple of questions. First of all, are we talking about a permanent override? Are we talking about an override for a limited period of time?
That is an awesome question. I do not believe that you would get language approved that would be a permanent override. Most, the Headley amendments that I've seen are, I've seen them for one year, and I've seen them for two years. Doesn't mean that you could not do it for more, but the ones that I have seen have always been time-bound.
Okay. And then the other question is, has this been done in other communities? And is it something that we can benchmark with other communities?
Yes, it's been done in other communities, and what is the benchmark that you're looking for?
What was the effect of that being done? You know, how did it really work out with the residents? And just what was the overall effect?
Okay. We can definitely get that for you.
Okay.
Others that wish to have the floor on this discussion item? This is obviously an ongoing, an important conversation, and it's just one piece of the pie for the administration. As we delve deeper into the budget process, I imagine it's already something that's accessible, but it'll be really beneficial to the community if we had essentially a pie chart that showed all the sources of revenue that the city of Pontiac gets overall. A majority of our tax income is actually income taxes. We are one of 23 cities in the state that have an income tax, different rates if you aren't a resident but work within the boundaries of the city and so forth. And so it's important for us to see all these pieces of the puzzle, and then we could visualize for ourselves and the community about, if not for this Headley rollback, what are we talking about in real dollars? What would this mean in the current sort of fiscal environment we have? But as Councilman Parker invoked, there's penalties and fines, there are other different revenue streams that the city has or may have in the future that we want to consider proactively. And I know the Finance and Personnel Committee is already doing a dive into the various different millages and what their life cycles are, what their express functions and limitations are. And those are the questions that we want to think very strategically for you. We want to think strategically when we're considering these budgets, because they have a very direct impact on what source and what total are we talking about, and then therefore, what can we prioritize with the limited funds? Others that wish to have the floor?
The context of this discussion is also about road improvement. Part of the reason why we have such deteriorated roads is that local roads, the neighborhood roads, the ones that we're suffering on the most, have the least revenue options. There are some federal dollars for federal roads and freeways, of course. That's where you see some of those billion-dollar projects. And then there are state funding for some of the state roads. We in Pontiac are challenged that we only have one county road. Oh, that's the Brett Nicholson comment? So that's a rare challenge that when it comes to our neighborhood roads, we are very limited, and we want to think very strategically, so that way, none of us have to suffer with what are essentially vanishing roads underneath us at our homes and our residences.
And the reason why this Headley is important to that, we don't currently have a dedicated road millage out, but we do have a capital improvement millage. And again, every year that a Headley rollback happens, that's less money that's collected in the capital improvement fund, which is less money for us to do roadwork and other type of repair.
Has the city of Pontiac ever sought or achieved a Headley override by the voters, to our knowledge?
I only looked back to 2015, and so between now and 2015, the answer to that question is no.
And to Councilman James's question, I know that many other communities in Oakland County alone, but I'm sure through Michigan, are asking these very same questions, because they're confronted with some really stark challenges with what they're dealing with. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the research shows, those that have been successful, those that are still vexed by it, and then maybe it will help us learn some lessons so we can engage our residents on an ongoing basis, so that they're fully empowered and equipped to know what their tax dollars can do, can't do, and they might want to do more of.
Any further discussion on this item, of which will be a continuing conversation in the months and years ahead? All right. Our next discussion item, cleaning up our Pontiac neighborhoods together. We just wanted to very briefly share for the residents, yard waste bags curbside pickup has resumed. April is here, so from now until November 30th, each residence in Pontiac can put up to 10 lawn bags per week, per house. So we'll do that, of course, for our neighborhoods, and we want you to know that for your household and your neighborhood. That's a great resource that the city provides. Anyone want to elaborate further on the curbside pickup with yard waste?
Michael, is there a restriction by how, in proximity to your pickup date, that you can have those bags out?
Thank you. It's the same day. So put those lawn bags out at the same cycle of your trash receptacle.
I asked that specifically because when we put our trash out, they're likely going next to the sewers. Though that natural waste collected next to a sewer is a breeding ground for vermin, so please be thoughtful of that, as we don't make new homes for our pets.
Yeah. And there's certain restrictions in terms of like bound sticks, et cetera, that you can find out more at pontiac.mi.us. Councilman Rutherford.
Can we put out some more flyers so the community can be more involved? Because we do have people in the community who do not, are not internet savvy. We also do have people who don't have cable, so can we as a community flood the floodgate so that we can stop hearing that it's our city is dirty and we can ask for improvement? Is there a way to do so?
No doubt. Yeah, I mean, and that's part of the reason why we've explicitly put it here, so that we can reiterate this information, and we welcome many more opportunities to hammer at home more. And that's why we've got so much work to do to scale up our communication as a city, period, point blank. Next item, recycling drop-off at City Hall every weekend. We've shared that at City Council before, but that's an opportunity for you in the parking lot of Pontiac City Hall, and you can find out more details at pontiac.mi.us or contacting the Department of Public Works if you have any questions. Anything about the recycling drop-off that anyone else would like to discuss? Special pickup collection every other week. So at the same day of your trash collection, but every other week. So basically, every two weeks, residents at your property can put up to two large items for pickup, but limit of two. So if you have collected 12 mattresses, please do not put 12 mattresses, for then there will be 10 mattresses remaining for your neighbors and you to suffer through. So we're working with code enforcement to make sure that that is not abused, but it's a great opportunity that exists, and you can find out more details and restrictions by contacting the Department of Public Works or on the city's website. Councilman Rutherford.
There seems to be a disconnect with DPW and the citizens in regards to special pickup, because there is a large amount of trash on certain streets in District 1 that has been called in for weeks. Couches that's been sitting there since last summer, and they still there. And so I'm just asking that we pick this up eventually, because they've been there a long time, and I'm getting complaints. So I just, I can't, I'm trying to be nice about it, but I'm, you know, yeah. It's a real issue over in District 1. We got real problems where stuff is, I mean, months, not just weeks, months. So I'm just asking you, because you are, to please ask them to do a better job in District 1.
Yeah, and what we're seeing in our district is that, in all honesty, landlords are abusing this opportunity for residents, where they are using it as shoving the cost and burden onto us taxpayers to clean out those that are, you know, either put out, or, you know, their items are being left there. And so it's creating essentially many trash heaps on the right-of-way, which is, no resident deserves to live at that, near that. It's unacceptable. So what we're doing, we need to do more of it in terms of getting those exact addresses, reporting it, working through the code enforcement channels. I see that we have our interim DPW director who is inching his way to the microphone. I'll go through these items, then we'll give you the floor. You can field any further feedback you'd like. Councilman Nicholson.
I've had the same problem with landlords. I have had a great response from the Code Enforcement Department coming out and ticketing those landlords, and there is a hefty fine for that pile of trash if it can be proven that it is not the person. If they don't answer the door, then there's a couple of visits that go back and forth, so it does elongate the process. But they have been ticketing a number of people. I've called in heaps of trash that looked like an eviction, and they've been, they've been on it.
Others that wish to elaborate on special pickup? In the meantime, if you or somebody you know has an address that you'd like the city to act on when it relates to an abuse of this, where there's debris that's accumulated on the curb or at a property, please let City Hall know. And we, as the city council, are here to help go to bat and get that information to the right folks. We don't want to stress you out for you having to hunt, but if nothing else, get it to the council so we can try and work it through the channels. Councilman James.
Yeah, I would just like to know, because I have also experienced quite a bit of problems with this in District 4 as well. But in many cases, the people who are calling and have sent me pictures, their items are like one or two larger items, like a couch or something. And I'm wondering, is there a reason why that special pickup is not picking those up? Are there, is there a list of things that they don't pick up? Because I thought that it was a matter of how many items, that if you have more than what is allowed, then they would not pick it up. But if there's one item out there, I guess I don't really understand why they're not picking those up.
One possibility, and I can't speculate on case-by-case basis, is that it's not the special pickup week, and then that'll screw things up if it's off of the collection date. But I want to give Mr. Cooley an opportunity. Are there other instances that you can share for the community, things that would not be allowed in the two items?
Yeah, there's a few exclusions, and they are on the website, and most of that is like construction debris or different items like that. There's several different cases of why things wouldn't be picked up. We've had a few incidences where there was a car parked in front of it, where they couldn't get access to the bulk item. But generally, if we can get a correct address, we can send JFL back to have them retrieve that item.
And would you like residents to contact the Department of Public Works directly for that?
Yes, yes. They can call our office at 248-758-3600 and speak with one of the ladies downstairs, and they'll send something back to JFL. and they'll send something back to GFL to have the truck come back.
Is that the same process for if someone's garbage can is not picked up?
Correct.
Okay. Others that wish to speak on, Councilwoman Rutherford?
Question, point of clarity. Can you identify and give us the timeline, and when an individual has a medical condition, how long it takes for them to actually have their special arrangements done for their trash to be actually grabbed from their house versus them taking it to the corner?
So there's a process that you have to go through to get on the recap program. Have a notice from your doctor. That notice has to be given over to GFL. And then also, part of that process is, GFL needs to know where you're going to leave your can at, so where they can expect it to be. We've ran into a couple incidences where somebody was new to the recap program, and there was a car in the way where they couldn't get the cart between the car in the house or the car in the fence. So it just has to be accessible for the driver to go up and get it. And there also has been some issues with GFL on just missing those stops that we've had to send them back after, and we have been working with the administration on meeting with GFL and trying to clear those up.
But you still, I just didn't know what's the actual timeline? Is it two weeks, six weeks, three months?
I don't think there's an actual dedicated timeline. It just, it's the process of getting the paperwork correct and getting everything to GFL, and it just depends on how long all that takes.
And is there a way the administration can admit, can come up with the timeline? Because we have many people who are elderly, who have medical conditions that need that recap program, and so I just want to have a timeline because I've had instances in my district where they've had a long period of waiting. So is there a way we can get the administration, or if they can answer to that, I'd appreciate that?
So thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will, we will work, we'll look to see what has happened in the past, how long it's taken, and then we will, we will create expectations and a brand promise for how long it will, you can expect us to take to go through the process.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson?
I remember an email scolding us to tell our residents to stop calling GFL that came from GFL. So I wish that they could even cover up the logo on the side of the truck so that if we are responsible for customer service within this contract, that we can somehow make very sure that our contact information is given and that, because what it looks like to me, when I pass my house, it's a big billboard that's going down the street. I mean, so to get an email that says, please don't call here, was frustrating when they're driving billboards all around the city.
Yeah, and I understand that, and we have, the administration and myself have had meetings with GFL, and we're in the process of working that through to where GFL will be accepting those calls.
Great, thank you.
Others that wish to speak on the special pickup collection? With that, the citywide cleanup efforts, April 18th through April 23rd. You've heard us speak repeatedly that we're coming together with many community organizations to, in every corner of our city, tackle priority areas. You've seen that advertised, there's flyers in the back of the chambers here as well, but that in each of the seven districts, that there are specific days and times to meet up. And we are enlisting and inviting every resident to take charge of their little slice of Pontiac heaven, because you know your street best, you know your block best, and as we are working to scale up more resources, as we were just talking about, as we're trying to build up more resources and processes to get our neighborhoods cleaner, it's a, it is a collaborative effort so that way we don't have to endure as much garbage, literally. But any other discussion on the citywide cleanup that we'll keep announcing until it takes place? Councilwoman Rutherford?
I'm just so excited because of Art Dunlap being on there, so that just makes me excited. A special shout-out to Mayor Grimal for actually understanding why I wanted Art Dunlap to be displayed. It's on South Boulevard, the kids want to have steady yard rims and remaking their black top and make sure that it looks good. So I just want to thank you personally for getting Art Dunlap together because I made that as a campaign promise, and I am able to deliver. Thank you.
Others on the cleanup?
I just want to encourage the city to come out and participate, particularly all of our churches, all of our organizations in the city. If you've got youth groups, please encourage your groups to come out and take a part. You've got projects going, if you look at the flyer, you've got projects going all over the city. So please get your young people involved, get your families involved, and participate in the citywide cleanup. You know, when we do that, we gain pride in our city and in ourselves, so I want to encourage everybody, please take part.
Others on the cleanups? Councilman Parker?
Thank you. I just want to remind all of our businesses in the cities that they have a responsibility as well to keep their particular area clean. I believe that the mayor and I had to have this discussion regarding sending out some type of flyer to all the businesses, reminding them that we will be cleaning up, have a citywide cleanup effort, and it doesn't exclude them from cleaning up their areas and keeping their areas clean throughout the course of the year.
Amen.
Thank you. Others that wish to speak on the bullet about the citywide cleanups? Sharing with you now, we've shared it at previous council meetings, but Free City Landfill Days are April 23rd, April 30th, and May 7th. That's at 575 Collier Road in Pontiac, 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM on those days, free to those whose IDs reflect that you have a Pontiac address. And you can get more information about some of the restrictions, including if you want to do tires, it's $3 a pop, but the city's website or the DPW department can give you more intel. Any discussion on Free City Landfill Days coming up? All right, and then finally, in this discussion item, street sweeping plans and challenges. Wanted to give the city the opportunity to share what the plan is for the major roads and what the challenges are for our neighborhood roads that aren't limited to Pontiac. But Mr. Cooley, if you can give us a sense of what our challenges and opportunities are there for street sweeping?
Yeah, so over the past several years, I believe it's been seven or eight years now, we've contracted with a semi-local supplier that we rent sweepers from to do our spring sweep, to do the local roads, and then do the major roads at the same time. We would typically rent two sweepers for two months. Because of the supply chain shortage, they do not have the type of sweepers that we use to do the locals. It's a particular sweeper, so it's easily maneuverable in and out of the cars that are parked on the roadway. The only sweeper that was available was more of a truck-driven sweeper. It's a little more costly than what the typical sweepers are that we would get. So we have rented that, and we are in the process of sweeping the major streets currently. As you know, we did a lot of patching over this winter. There's a lot of debris in the gutter pans, and they're working their way through there. I did reach out to just about every person that I could find that had sweepers to rent, even as far as Cleveland, Ohio, to try to get us sweepers to rent, to sweep the local streets. And the soonest we're able to get a sweeper, the style of sweeper we need is early August. So we will not be going into the local streets until early August to sweep those streets.
Did the city previously have our own street sweeper vehicle?
Previous to emergency management, yes, we had our own street sweepers, and we were able to sweep at any time during the year, car accidents, anything that come up like that. Currently, as the administration has talked, you know, we're going through the budget season, and it is something that I'm requesting in the budget to purchase sweepers.
And is that available in terms of supply chain issues? Is purchase an option in the future?
Yes, it is, but it would be most likely we would not get them until late this year or early in the spring. So, you know, there's a whole lead time on the buildup of the actual equipment to get it here.
Understood. Council, who wish to speak on that? Councilman James?
Any chance of sharing equipment with another city?
Typically, most of the cities are using their equipment right now because they're doing the same thing that we would be doing, but I am in the process of reaching out to see if there's some type of local agreement that we could do to, possibly when they're done with doing their streets, we could, we could rent them from them or share it with them.
Others that wish to have before Councilman Rutherford?
Has anybody from the administration reached out to Oakland County and asked if we could have a partnership, both private and public, because they do have street sweepers, do they not?
I believe the Road Commission has some sweepers, but I think they contract a lot of their work out as well. So we do have a partnership with the Road Commission, and it's something that we've talked to them about currently. They don't have nothing available for us, but we, I have reached out to a lot of different areas to try to find us sweepers.
I understand that, but my question is, can the administration call in a special favor and ask that? Because the problem is that we have neighborhoods who are doing community cleanup, especially in District One, and I promised them a street sweeper, and I'm going to find one. So I'm trying to find a resolution. So I'm asking the administration, can you go to bat for me on that?
Mayor Grimal?
Your point is well-taken, Councilwoman, and I will see what we can do.
Thank you.
Mr. Cooley, was there anything further on other items in terms of cleaning up our Pontiac neighborhoods together that, wanted to give you the opportunity to?
The only thing I wanted to speak on was when you were talking about the yard waste bags. Please remember that you can't put them right up against the cart. If they're, if they're too close to the cart, then that'll cause an issue with the truck being able to pick up your trash cart. So make sure there's a separation between your yard waste bags and your trash cart so that they still have the availability to pick that up.
And that's picked up by a separate vehicle, correct?
Correct.
So don't be, don't freak out too quickly if it's not at the same time picked up, correct?
Correct.
And if they aren't picked up, they can again call?
Call the DPW office, and we will get them back over there.
Give our friends at home that number again. So when it comes to cleaning up our Pontiac neighborhoods together, we've got some options here in terms of yard waste bags, recycling drop-off options, special pickup collection every other week, the citywide cleanup efforts planned for this month and beyond, the Free City Landfill Days, April 23rd, April 30th, May 7th, and the priority of trying to get the equipment that can help us sweep these dirty streets.
Thanks.
Others that wish to have a floor on this discussion item? Thank you to this council, who, behind the scenes, just so that the community knows, has put a lot of time in to try and help serve as the point people and connect residents with those services in the various different departments. We understand those challenges because we experiences them as well as residents. Hearing no further discussion on that item, we now are at the final discussion item, current employment opportunities at Pontiac City Hall. Wanted to update you as it relates to 10 different employment opportunities directly with the city of Pontiac. Administration, I do have the list, but administration, if you'd like to elaborate first?
I'll allow you, Council President, to read the list, but I do want to really emphasize that we're looking for applicants, and we encourage people to apply, especially city residents. So please, apply. You can find those opportunities online on the city's website. And so as President McGinnis reads the list, again, I really want to underscore that we always prefer to hire city residents, so please, please apply.
And with that, the positions that are available for employment with the city of Pontiac, youth recreation director, executive assistant, community relations specialist, executive office coordinator, public relations and events specialist, community concerns specialist, maintenance superintendent, laborer two with the Department of Public Works, laborer one with the Department of Public Works, and the city council will be posting our communications outreach specialist that the previous council had budgeted for. And so those, if you've been watching city council meetings, some of those aren't surprises to you because we've been debating them, funding them, authorizing their creation. Any further discussion? Councilman Nicholson?
I got an email earlier this week asking why the job postings that are down on the window at building and safety and planning are not posted on our website. As a reminder, those positions are specifically building and safety related. They are with Wade Trim. So there is, there is some legality over one organization posting another organization's jobs. There are ways to work around that, which I'm sure we'll look to if, as long as that relationship maintains and continues, we'll be supportive.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal?
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson, for clarifying that. It's a really important point. Our building department was outsourced many years ago to Wade Trim. We are interested in and are looking at trying to in-source those positions as quickly as possible. We've already notified Wade Trim of our intention to bring those positions in-house here to City Hall. But in the meantime, it is Wade Trim that hires for those positions because they're employees of Wade Trim, not of the city.
Other discussion? Councilman Parker?
Well, I just have a question. When does Wade Trim's contract up?
Yes, it's month-to-month.
Deputy Mayor, do you know the exact date of that?
We're currently in a month-to-month contract with Wade Trim.
Okay. Any further discussion on current employment opportunities at Pontiac City Hall? Thank you very much. We're now at resolution number one. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to extend the media specialist contractual agreement through the end of fiscal year 2021, '22?
Moved by Carrington.
It's moved by Carrington, seconded by Goodman. That motion is now before us. Mayor and administration, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'm going to turn the podium over to Mr. Phil Brown.
President, Mayor, Council, how you doing this evening? Currently, we have a, our media specialist, which was assisting the cable office, was under contract last year, and his contract is over, and we need to extend his contract until the, until the end of this fiscal year. And we're hoping, I'm hoping, we're hoping to bring him in as an employee of the cable office. So as of right now, he, I'm the only person in the cable office, which I do need help.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
So I see that you're paying him $20 an hour, right?
Yes.
And so my question is, why can't we just make this into an actual position versus just paying him up to $10,000, because he's going to do overtime, correct?
That's, sometimes, yes.
Right, so wouldn't it be better as a county, as a city, that we just create this as an actual job, whereas just giving him a $10,000 limit?
And that is what we're, and that is what we're hoping for.
Okay, thank you.
And Deputy Mayor?
To elaborate on your question, Councilwoman, my understanding is that this contract was originally entered into in the late fall, early winter of last year, and it has since, in, you know, at $20 an hour, $10,000 only lasts about 12 weeks. And the contract position had been used as a full-time position, so 12 weeks ran through, we ran up into this deadline. Mr. Brown brought it to our attention that they had run through the course of the contract, asked to have more money put on it. I said, at $10,000, you've already hit the limit by which the mayor could do it without coming to council. So it's been brought to council to say, hey, immediately, we would like to extend this contract so that we can have this individual available, not necessarily working 40 hours a week, but available to help when needed, and we are going to be including in our July budget that position. But the position has to be created and other things done. This was the most expedient way to get that person back into helping the cable office.
I understand that, but we're creating all these other jobs. Why we got to wait till July?
No, so the, the answer to that is, if we wanted the media specialist to start immediately, like to be able to start as soon as the council approved this resolution, this was the way to do that. Creating a job, you have to actually have the job description. It has to come before council, and other things have to happen. This was something that could happen immediately. Literally, we just needed to get the resolution in front of you.
Okay, so you are going to create this?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Parker?
Thank you. I just have one question. Does the $10,000 make this employee whole at this point?
No.
Will it make him whole? Regarding the, because I recall you said the original contract had run out, and he's just been working.
No, he has not been working. We have not been using him.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Goodman?
I've been privy to this for a while because, as most people know, communications is the department that, well, the subcommittee that I chair. So I've known for a couple weeks now that Taj, our media specialist, hasn't been here. And to your point, Councilwoman Rutherford, like the Deputy Mayor said, this has been going on for a few weeks now, trying to figure out how to get Taj back in here. So again, this is the quickest, the most expedient way because you have the same concern. So again, this is the quickest, the most expedient way because you have the same concern that I do, which is I would prefer that the city not get in the habit of just having a bunch of contractors and to actually start hiring employees. So, you know, to hear that the administration is pushing for this to be an actual position starting the next fiscal year and, you know, working a process to get him in, back to work as soon as possible, since this is not a time period anyone wants to be out of work. I think that this is probably the best bet to go for, at least for the time being.
Mayor Grimal.
I want to emphasize that our administration takes very seriously the charge that we only spend funds when City Council budgets those funds. I know that wasn't always the case in the past here in the city. But as a result of that, as soon as that threshold was hit, the individual in question stopped working here at City Hall because we're not going to continue to pay somebody or initiate the spending of funds without council approval. And that's why, once that threshold was hit, we have not been utilizing this individual. If and when City Council decides to approve this resolution and authorize continued hiring of the individual, we will continue to utilize his services. But we have not been utilizing him since that threshold was hit.
Councilman James.
Yeah. My question is, is this $10,000 limit going to cover him until we get through the budget process and he can be brought on as a regular employee?
Yes, that is sufficient to carry us through the end of the year.
Councilman Rutherford.
Okay. Just a point of clarity, in the previous administration, the cable budget was under the council. Was under the council. I'm asking. I just want to know. I need you to answer that. Can you answer that for me?
So I don't know for a fact, but I am looking at Attorney Sharp, and she is saying, no, it was not.
Before the last council, before emergency manager, it was under the council.
That's the point I was getting at.
And so last council tried to bring it back under the council, but was unsuccessful.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask a question that, or make a point. I fully support this and I'm glad that we'll be doing this. But the memorandum of understanding by the former mayor was signed December 30th of 2021, and I think it's bogus.
No, that was a mistake. I'm sorry. That was a mistake. It was signed 11/30.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah. And the reason why, and the reason why he came, and the reason why it was urgent that he came, I've been trying to get, he used to be an intern for me a couple of years ago, and I was trying to bring him in to be permanent. But the reason why he came back at that time is I had COVID and I could not be in the office, and we needed somebody here.
Understood completely. Well, I retract my concern, although I have concern about the other 11th-hour previous mayor decision. Okay. All right. Excellent. I'd like to have a motion to amend the resolution. The first whereas says December 30th, so we're gonna strike that and substitute the accurate language of November 30th, 2021. Are you making that motion to amend?
Correct.
Is there a second? All right. Right now, the amendment is before us that's just modifying the date in one of the whereases of this resolution so it reflects what the memorandum of understanding says from 2021. Any further discussion on that date update? With that, roll call on the amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right. That amendment carries. We're now at the main motion. Is there any further discussion or amendments? We want to thank Mr. Robinson for his work that he's done. Very excellent work for the city, and we look forward to having him return once more pending this affirmative outcome. Hearing no further discussion. The motion before us is adoption of the resolution to extend the media specialist contractual agreement through the end of fiscal year 2021-22. Roll call. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to schedule a public hearing to establish an obsolete property rehabilitation district for parcel number 641430453001 from MICA 6 Community LLC Project, Webster Community Center located at 640 West Huron Street? So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and seconded, so this is before us. Debate can continue for multiple weeks, but this is more so to schedule that public hearing, as will be the next item, so that way we can center the public's opportunity to weigh in on the matter. But Mayor and Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. As you mentioned, this matter this evening is simply a vote to schedule a public hearing on the matter. It is not to actually approve the Oprah tax abatement. I also would note that I think most of council and the public are familiar with the basic proposal at Webster. It is, in essence, what I have heard most community members express as their desired redevelopment of old-school buildings, which is to redevelop it as a community center of sorts. And so with that, I'd welcome Ms. Lynette Phillips to the podium to get into the additional details regarding the proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council President, Honorable Body, Pontiac residents. I have before you two resolutions. Both are to schedule public hearings, and I'm gonna keep them separate. They're related to the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act, PA 146 of 2000, as amended. The first resolution is to schedule the public hearing for the Oprah district. And that district is a requirement, and on behalf of MICA 6 Community LLC, for the property located at 640 West Huron. That property is the former Webster School, which is a 53,000-square-foot building on five acres of land, and that school closed in the year 2006. And in 2016, 10 years later, MICA 6 acquired the property. And at this point, or at the point, they want to rehab it and invest $17.8 million to bring the facility up to standard and to create the Webster Community Center. Oh, I'm sorry. So with that investment of the $17.8 million in construction, which is expected to commence, I'm sorry, yeah, August 15th of this year, 2022, and be completed in 14 months, which would be October 23rd, I mean, I'm sorry, October 15th of 2023. And during that time, they're estimated that there would be 50 construction jobs, which we hope those would go to some Pontiac residents. And then upon the completion of the district and the construction, then there should be approximately 90 jobs from the 12 tenants that they are expecting in that building. At that point, and the reason that the district, establishing of the district is a requirement because the next amendment, I mean, I'm sorry, the next resolution is to approve the application, which this information is in your package. So should I continue and discuss the second resolution, or should we just wait and focus on the public hearing to be scheduled? And we're asking that be done on April 19th. There's a 10-day requirement that the clerk provide the notice for the hearing. And so if the notice is published this week, then April 19th could be the date for the public hearing. And at that time, after garnering feedback from the businesses and residents and who's ever interested, then we would, at that time, present the actual resolution.
I defer to President McGinnis's discretion as Council President, but it might not hurt for you to provide some additional information about the merits of the underlying proposal so that council has some information in advance of April 19th. But again, I defer to you, President McGinnis.
Well, we've got the motion before us, and then the second motion would follow. Is there any further discussion about scheduling the public hearing about the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district? Councilman Nicholson.
We're approving to schedule a hearing that sounds like there's already a date in mind.
I'm suggesting April 19th because if the notice is published this week and there's a 10-day requirement, then that would be in line with April 19th, which is a Tuesday.
Okay.
I would defer to Clerk Doyle, but that is a reasonable timeframe.
So the earliest the notice can be published would be Thursday. So we might, 10-day requirement, if you approve it today.
Thank you. Others that wish to want to speak to the first motion. Council President Protam Carrington.
Oh, yes. Thank you, President McGinnis. Actually, I just got really a couple of questions that I didn't see in any of the whereas, and I'm wondering, would that be, after the public hearing, will you guys be coming back with another resolutions of approval? For example, how many years are they requesting this particular Oprah?
That is a good question. And so in terms of the timeframe, the terms of the Oprah, the years, we're gonna provide that detail in the resolution. So it probably, based on the number, the length of the Oprah is based on the number of jobs created and the tax impact for the city. So when we present the resolution for both the district and to approve the application, we'll provide the details of the terms and the recommendation for the city, for the length of the Oprah. Based on, we'll provide, you know, the tax impact towards the city, on the city.
Okay. Well, that was my second question because I want to know how much, as taxpayers, that we are foregoing with approving this. So...
Councilman Nicholson.
Well, okay. I was gonna say, without going into a lot of detail, the property has an SEV value at this point. That would be frozen based on the tax, for taxes on 2022 and 2023. We'll look at the value of the property and the number of jobs. And that's what I said, there will be some analysis and some detail in the resolution, not to schedule at the public hearing, but we will address some of those questions, you know, at that time. But we're, I mean, an Oprah could be up to 12 years, but we can say for sure that it won't be that length of time.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions.
Councilman, I think that information has to be available for the public meeting. I don't see how, what, I mean, of course, they could debate the merits of the project. I think our community, specifically adjacent to the property, has...
Certainly, we can provide that at the public hearing, which would be, hopefully, by April 19th.
Okay.
But we just, tonight, we just want to schedule the hearing.
That's fine. I think it's just for the community's benefit to understand that that information will be available to the public.
And may I add, in addition to that information, we'll, you know, we'll have the, we have the application, which is in your package. There's the Certificate of Obsolescence. There's the detail in terms of the jobs, the fees for the construction, some background information, the schematic of the, you know, what the property will look like. But all of that information will be available at the public hearing.
Councilman Rutherford's had her hand for a while.
Okay. You mentioned earlier, two questions. You mentioned earlier about the SEV value. What is the SEV value? What's the number?
Right now, it is, I think it's like $114,500.
Okay. Second part is, MICA 6 owns several other properties in Pontiac. Do they not?
Yes, they do.
Okay. As a caveat, I'm asking, even though we're gonna be doing a puppy, I'm just asking for my own sake. I don't feel comfortable voting for this. I'm going to vote, but I'm, I'm a little concerned with the other properties, whereas giving out tax abamments and doing a hearing, I just don't understand how to correlate that.
So we can say that they own both some commercial and residential properties that are in satisfactory status in terms of, you know, their tax payments.
You said that they're in satisfactory?
With regard to, with tax payments, yes.
Just the tax payment part, right?
I'm speaking to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Grimal. I did have a question.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I want to just emphasize that we agree with Councilman Nicholson's point that it's important for the public to have access to the information prior to the public hearing. And we want to facilitate that. Certainly, we can have that information here on April 19th. However, to make sure that the public has access to that information before April 19th, we're happy to provide that information to council in your packet for next week's meeting, the April 12th meeting. And that way, it will be available not just to City Council in advance, but also to the public in advance. And so we can provide that information to you in whatever format makes sense, but it could be an informational item for discussion purposes at next Tuesday's council meeting on April 12th, or whatever other format the council deems appropriate. And I know that Ms. Phillips answered Councilwoman Rutherford's question in regard to tax payments. If council has other questions regarding the other properties owned by MICA 6, we welcome the opportunity to answer those questions as well.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, President. I just had a small, minor correction as I was looking at your letter. Can somebody put me a decimal point somewhere in this number? Because when I looked at it, I thought it was thousand, but then you said it was million. So I think we need to put a period after the three so that we understand that's millions and not...
The 17 million?
17 million, 785,613. Is it okay if I put a decimal after that number?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Because when I read this thousand...
I apologize for that typo.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we was all clear. Because when I first saw it, I thought a thousand, and you said millions.
Well, 17,785,613?
Yeah. I would not know that if the decimal, if you hadn't have said that because the decimal was not there.
Oh, okay. Decimal point zero zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Sure.
Councilman Goodman for a first time.
Yes. Mike's not on. Are you referring to the letter that Lynette emailed to us?
I'm referring to the first letter, the City of Pontiac, this first letter, where the amount is mentioned in the second paragraph.
So I think that may just be an error that is on your paper in House Terms of Printing because I believe that the rest of us do have the correct comma points in there. Just to do my part to be in good faith with the administration.
Well, the commas are there, but I think he's asking for the decimal and then zero zero.
Yes. Are we amending a memorandum or the actual resolution? The actual resolution doesn't state that number from what I see. That's just an email communication.
Councilman Rutherford.
Okay. So MICA 6 owns Emerson. Emerson is burnt down. What is my reservation for where I'm, how this is gonna move me or sway me is how we doing even a hearing on this when there's other properties that are not up to code? Because you stated earlier that it was tax up to code. You did not state that it was up to code in the standards that we need for a burnt-down building to be.
Well, I can say with regard to Emerson, there's, the property has been fenced, the grass is cut, and they, you know...
Order.
I mean, I can't confirm everything, but they do pick up the trash on a weekly basis. There is a fence around there.
I'll wait. Okay.
And no outstanding citations are, you know, to my knowledge.
I'm talking about the way the building looks. That's what my issue is.
President Protam Carrington.
Any more for Councilwoman Rutherford?
Oh, no. I'm done. You can go ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President. Really, my only concern is that make sure that we have enough information for the community before the public hearing. I definitely think this is a beautiful project, but we just want to make sure that the community able to know everything about the project, as well as what we giving up for this project to be successful. I think that's critical. We did receive emails concerning a few, for Emerson particularly. We did receive emails concerning a few, for Emerson particularly, because this kind of borders my district and District 5. So I did seen that over the course of this time, that this particular, MICA 6 has been owning this, but before then was someone else, right? If I'm not mistaken, I don't know how long MICA 6 actually owned Emerson. But I did see that from the records of the city, that the property had been, was kept up, and trash was picked up due to dumping that time. So I've seen that. So, and also in that email, I think Mr. Coleman did say that, that he has someone that goes out there weekly to check that property to make sure that he keeps it up. So I just want to ask the community, please call us, myself, or our District 5 councilperson, just so we, we are know if this is happening. Because I want to make sure we being fair to all parties, fair to the citizens, as well as fair to MICA 6, that is bringing a very, very beautiful program to the city. I don't want us to move hastily, but I want us to move fairly, and this council making that decision. Thank you.
Mayor Grimal.
It's essential, from the administration's perspective, that we answer council people's questions fully, completely, and accurately. And I don't know that Ms. Phillips has all of the most up-to-date information. So I would invite Mr. Gustafson to the microphone to make sure that we're accurately answering Councilwoman Rutherford's question.
Good evening, Council President, City Council Mayor, Deputy Mayor. Yes, between myself and also Mike Wilson, building official, and also a few of my code enforcement staff, we did make some investigations earlier today and also yesterday on a number of properties. There's 14 properties that are owned by MICA 6 and/or Coleman-Yoakam. And I would say that as relates to Emerson, we did notice and photograph today quite a bit in regard, there's open to trespass on first floor, and there is some sanitation issues. All of these, all of this information, I was able to communicate with Coleman, and he'll be working to obviously get these resolved. We did notice in talking with code enforcement and investigating further, there is, addresses 32 and 34 Newberry. It was last inspected as a rental back in 2017. And 2020, that information, or that application, it was never paid for. So it has not been inspected since 2017. 42 and 44 Newberry, that inspection comes up this year, and he'll be submitting his application for those new rental inspections. And as relates to the last item, a CVO, certificate of occupancy, was issued for Sprout back in 2017. And the owner agreed, because he obviously wanted to get his shop open and provide the services and product that he does, agreed to complete the site plan document, so to speak, which still has to be, a couple of items needs to be completed. So I asked him, I asked him again to complete that, because he did agree to that back in 2017. So, Mr. Wilson, I'm not too sure if there's anything else that you would like to add to from our investigation here? Okay. Hopefully, I answered some of your questions.
Thank you. So obsolete property. We have a lot of that in Pontiac, and we see in the packet that it's been attested to by the county and others, that this is an applicable parcel, that it's been obsolete. And it was you and I, the taxpayers of Pontiac, that owned that obsolete property when it became obsolete. And I was curious, what other existing obsolete property rehabilitation districts exist within the city currently, if we have that information available?
So I believe, I know we have it. Ms. Phillips, did you bring that with you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Did you bring the list of the other obsolete property rehabilitation certificates with you?
I know we have. I think at least four. I don't have the list with me.
That'll be helpful information as we move forward, just because it's a unique district that we'd be potentially considering, and that the public will have an opportunity to weigh in on. Any other discussion on the scheduling of the public hearing for the obsolete property rehabilitation district? Councilwoman James.
Well, just a clarification. The district includes just the Webster School, correct? Or is it Webster School in addition to?
No, it's just for this property at 640 West Huron.
That district is just about Webster School?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion about the scheduling of the public hearing for the district? With that, roll call on scheduling the public hearing for April 19, 2022, which would intentionally correlate with one of our Pontiac City Council meetings. Roll call Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. And for the community's benefit, we look forward to hearing your feedback on April 19. Not the only opportunity, but it's the public hearing opportunity. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to schedule a public hearing for approval of application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate for MICA 6 Community LLC, Project Webster Community Center, located at 640 West Huron Street?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Phillips, anything you'd like us to know further in terms of the exemption certificate application itself?
Yes. If I could just add that in your package, you do have the certificate of obsolescence that was provided by Oakland County and some other background information. But the community center will be a hub for food and nutrition for the Pontiac residents. But the 12 residents or 12 tenants that will be located there, it's all going to be focused around nutrition, healthy lifestyle, with a community garden, and with a commercial kitchen that would be for rent. There's also some, you know, plans for youth activities, art, theater, music. And they're in communication with both SMART and MDOT for an inside bus terminal. So that should be some, you know, other activities that will be housed there. Again, as a follow-up, this resolution to approve the application is contingent upon the resolution to accept and establish the district. So the first resolution has to pass before the second one. We can move forward to that. But as a follow-up, the information will be provided that you're requesting the analysis, the details, and the recommendation for the terms of the Oprah, and other Oprahs that the city has.
All right. The motion before us, Councilwoman Rutherford.
Can we, Council President, table this vote for one week? Do we have to vote on this? Because we don't have enough information. I think, I don't, to vote on them. Just asking, is it a way that we can do so, that we can table this vote for one week?
This is the scheduling of the public hearing, and so that would be scheduled again in the same context of 10 days are required. And we would intentionally try and have it be on the same day, so that way we're making good use of residents' time. If they want to speak on both, they could, they have two bites at the apple with the two public hearings on the same day. But this does not necessitate us being hasty with the actual district approval or the exemption certificate. This is allowing us to keep the process moving with the scheduling of the public hearings and adhering to state law in our ordinance.
Okay. Thanks for the clarity.
No, thank you. Others that wish to have the floor on this particular public hearing, scheduling round two. I want to acknowledge that these are extremely obsolete properties of this size and magnitude. There's a reason why they're continuing to be obsolete in our community. I live, as you may know, on Union Street, literally across the street from the old Central Elementary School, a national historic site. It has been vacant and rotting for 40 years. And that is privately owned, and we're not necessarily sort of raking that private owner over the coals, even though there is more work that we should do as a community. But we, as a council and the administration, want to be very thorough and diligent when it comes to any project, because this is your neighborhood, these are your tax tollers. This is, it's like, what's that Guthrie song, "This land is your land, this land is mine." But it's important, and we want to be very strategic. So we're going to be thorough and do a lot of research. But I don't want it to be lost, that it is actually a good thing that we are at this point, that an obsolete property actually has a path forward. And I hope that the other property owners or entities that own different obsolete properties in our community step up and start taking the steps forward to resolve it one way or the other. And ladies and gentlemen, that includes you and I. Because as taxpayers in Pontiac, we own, in my district, the former Purdue School. I think it's a shame that it was stuck on the taxpayers, but we got it now. And so it's our responsibility to not allow those obsolete properties to continue to just sit there and be a drain and a deterrent on our neighborhoods, on our tax base. And we want to have a viable future for that land or those buildings in every corner of the city. So I'm hopeful that through this evening and through the due process that all of us are going to do as residents and city leaders, that we're making these strong decisions, but we're also keeping that possibility open, that more of these obsolete properties can be resolved. Some of that sadly will be demolition. Some of that might be the same use that it was before. But in a lot of these, it's going to be repurposing or reimagining what they can be, because we no longer have the need for 38 schools in our city. And so we have been stuck with that burden as residents and taxpayers in one form or another. And I, as one city councilperson, am really grateful that we, for Webster School, are actually seeing movement and a viable plan. And the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act is our way of having a very limited skin-in-the-game that opens up these state and federal grants and other funding that won't be available if we, the taxpayers, don't have some degree of involvement. And so this is a way for us to, it's an economic development tool for us to satisfy that and allow this project to be viable. And it's a very complicated and expensive project. Any further, Mayor Grimal?
That last point is, I think, particularly important, and we'll get into this in greater detail on April 19. But it is important to note that there is a lot of private financing being brought to bear for this project, and that approving the Oprah or providing some other form of local match is essential if we want to unlock state financing for the project. And so we'll be talking more about that. But it is important, if we want to actually take advantage of state funding and state financing through tax abatements at the state level, that we provide a local match. And lots of other communities all around us are doing so and taking advantage of state financing. And we, as a city, I think, it's fair to say, want to do more of that, so that we're getting our fair share from the state as well.
Other discussion on the motion before us? All right, speaker's list exhausted. This is the scheduling of the public hearing for April 19, related to specifically the rehabilitation exemption certificate for the project. Here, no further discussion. Roll call on the scheduling of the public hearing for April 19, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Thank you.
Thank you. That motion carries. Is there a motion to, oh, now we're at what we amended for the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the city council resolution proclaiming April 2022 as Arab American Heritage Month in Pontiac?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Goodman, seconded by Rutherford. So that motion is before us. I'll very briefly power through it. Whereas the United States celebrates Arab American Heritage Month during the month of April, recognizing the history, cultures, and achievements of Arab Americans and people who trace their ethnic lineage to Southwest Asia and North Africa. Whereas Arab Americans are Americans of Arab descent, with many Americans having ethnic roots in Arab countries including Lebanon, Syria, Palestine, Egypt, Yemen, and Iraq, an extraordinarily diverse population that spans many different ethnicities, languages, and religious communities. Whereas the first Arab American immigrants arrived in the late 1800s, and a larger second wave of immigration began in post-World War II and continues today with the largest communities in America concentrated in southeastern Michigan. Whereas the city of Pontiac, Michigan, has been positively shaped by past and present Arab American residents and business owners through the decades. Whereas during an era of heightened racism, bigotry, and hate crimes, it is critically important to share accurate information, celebrate diverse cultures, overcome stereotypes, and empower future generations. Now, therefore be it resolved, the Pontiac City Council hereby proclaims Arab, April 2022 as Arab American Heritage Month in Pontiac, Michigan. And further resolved, the Pontiac City Council celebrates the many noteworthy contributions of Arab Americans to our city, our state, our nation, and our world. And further resolved, that we welcome additional opportunities to commemorate and celebrate the people, places, and events that have contributed to making the Arab American community such an important part of Pontiac, of Michigan, and of the United States. Further discussion? Councilman Goodman.
I'm happy to see this for the fact of, I firmly believe in the idea of what Fred Hampton would have called the Rainbow Coalition. You know, all the different groups working together for a common goal and a common mission. And I think it's an important part, as a city full of groups of people who have systemically been oppressed, to have that allyship across lines, especially with the fact that, as you pointed out in the resolution, southeast Michigan is home to, if I remember correctly, the largest concentration of Arab Americans outside of the, and I use the term Middle East in a very, very common way. Especially with the fact that the communities that we typically recognize as heavily Arab American still, within their own cities, deal with racism and oppression. I mean, even if we talk about Dearborn, there is still that divide that exists between the white residents of the city and the brown residents of the city. So I think that there is an amazing amount of power by making this resolution and pointing out that allyship, even though our city itself may not have an Arab American population similar to other communities. So again, this is good. Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? From the Pontiac history perspective, Oakland County's Historical Society has different artifacts and research about many early residents and proprietors in Pontiac and Oakland County. Want to spotlight very briefly that there is a Lebanese-American immigrant, the Hadad family. They had a candy store on South Saginaw Street over 100 years ago. We still even have the stove that they baked the sugar in and made the caramel and the other candies that were a part of the downtown Pontiac landscape. So that's over a century ago, that there is long track record of Arab American residents and proprietors in the Pontiac community, and of course, Oakland County in Michigan. Any further discussion? Here we go for the discussion. Roll call on the adoption of the resolution proclaiming April 2022 as Arab American Heritage Month in Pontiac.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to schedule a meeting of the Pontiac City Council in conjunction with the Auburn Hills City Council?
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved by Parker, seconded by Carrington. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, no discussion. Speaker's list, yes.
I think it's important to be good neighbors. I don't think that the actions the Auburn Hills City Council took during their SMART vote was being a good neighbor. But I think we can be the bigger neighbor and the better neighbor and say yes to breaking bread, and see if we can continue to and influence their ideas and broaden their horizons moving forward. That's my personal opinion.
Thank you. Fun fact, we are the bigger neighbor. We have more square feet, tens of thousands more people. But I just, Councilman Goodman.
I'd like to just say that I back up Councilman Nicholson's point, and also recognize that we are the bigger person, because we didn't vote to leave SMART.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilwoman James?
We are going to go in good faith. They invited us. We accepted their invitation, and we are going to go in good faith, because there are other areas of cooperation that we can establish with them. So we want to go with the right attitude. attitude.
Any further discussion? Speaker's list exhausted. Roll call on the adoption of the resolution to schedule a meeting of the Pontiac City Council in conjunction with the Auburn Hills City Council. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeses, no nays.
That motion carries, and thank you to the clerk and the clerk's office, the assistance on that front. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the contract with National Career Group LLC for $75,000 to provide human resources contractual services to the city and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement?
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. The motion's before us. Mayor Administration, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. As counsel is aware, we had utilized this firm, the National Career Group, on an emergency basis, under the emergency exception to the $10,000 threshold for a period of four weeks, and at that time indicated our intention and desire to go through an RFP process for a contractual relationship for a longer period of time. That RFP process was commenced. The city received a number of proposals in response to that RFP. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Mayor Stevens to talk through the selection process, since he was a member of the selection group, along with Councilman Nicholson, to identify the best applicant, the best proposal out of those received by the city.
Thank you, Mayor. So as the mayor said, counsel, we embarked on an RFP process. We had several applicants to that RFP process. Two made their way to the top, National Career Group being one of them. As is a best practice, we did, we, the committee met, we had questions about each of the groups, and we contacted the groups to ask for, to have those questions clarified. One of the questions for National Career Group was the fact that they had done the previous work for the city. And after contacting them, they agreed to actually amend their application such that they credited the city for 50% of the amount that they had already billed the city for the work that was done. So with that credit, that credit, along with the rest of the way that their application was put together, brought them to the clear top of the list for moving forward. They have done, I would say, a very good job in the four weeks that they were here as far as uncovering some items. So primarily, they were here to handle some emergency services that we had, in that the city of Pontiac had one full-time HR individual who was continuing to fall behind on activities. So they came in and helped us actually not fall further behind on activities. But on top of doing that, they were very instrumental in helping us with putting together the information that we needed to move forward with the realignment of city departments for our budgeting process. But additionally, they uncovered some other items that had not even been brought to our attention as of yet. And so we are looking forward to having them finish this workout, and as part of finishing this workout, they will be helping us bring on a new permanent HR professional.
Councilman Nicholson.
Deputy Mayor, can you go over the timeframe of the contract as well as the deliverables?
Yes. So this contract would take us through the end of this fiscal year, and they would be finishing out, as I said, work that they have done with, that they have started with this before. We have, we have several reports that are due, and so they will be helping us do all of those reports. Not getting those reports done could cost the city multiple thousands of dollars. Additionally, as I already mentioned, they will be helping us to bring on an HR professional who will actually be able to do all of this work in their stead. There are a number of other positions that they will be helping us fill as well. Job descriptions, so they did a lot of work for us previously with job descriptions, as you've passed and seen at previous council meetings, but helping us with just finishing up and making sure that all of our job descriptions are actually uniform. So if you notice, some, if you look at all of our different job descriptions that we have, they were done in differing points in time, and they're not uniform. So they will be helping us put all of those into a uniform basis. And that is the bulk of the work, but there are other small things. So one of the other small things that they will be helping with or providing, they did a wage analysis for us, so they will actually be updating that wage analysis. The courts contacted us and asked if they could be added to that survey, as they are in the process of doing their union negotiations, and a number of smaller things like that. They will actually be, until such time as we have the new HR manager onboard, they will be functioning as HR.
Is it my understanding that we do now have an HR generalist?
We do now have an HR generalist, yes.
Well, this, who will that person be reporting to during this contract period?
So they will be reporting, as they currently are now, to me, but effectively, they will be working with the National Career Group. But all of their actual direction and counseling will still technically flow through me.
You understand my question. Thank you. I'll turn over to more questions from others.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you. How many employees will this cover? Just the one?
So that is a great question. We will have one person who will be on site, but it will actually cover the services of the firm. So the firm employs a labor lawyer, the firm employs several generalists, and so while we will have one who will come to our actual location three times a week, it will actually employ the services of the entirety of the firm.
Thank you.
President Protam, Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Just a couple of questions concerning this particular firm. Does this firm have any HR certifications?
Again, there is an HR labor lawyer who works with the firm, and then there are some generalists who work with the firm, but the firm principal, Ms. Nadia Sellers, does not have the certificate, personally have the certification that you're asking about.
Okay. So basically, the firm has three people. Basically, the firm, and then she consults out to other individuals. I'm just trying to understand how big this firm is, because you're asking us to place our HR department in this particular firm.
Yeah. So that is a great question. I do not know exactly how many employees she, the entirety of the firm has. I do know the ones that you see on that sheet. I will say that the runner-up firm is a much, much larger firm than this, and, you know, we could say that they have more employees. The difference in what National Career Group suggested and what that other firm suggested is that National Career Group would be bringing the entirety of the services of the firm, whereas the other, the second-place finisher, what they would do is, they would go out, they would find three HR professionals, they would hire the one that we asked them to hire, they would then place that individual with us as a placement firm and charge us the same way that a placement firm would charge for however long we needed that individual to be with us. They would then, if that individual needed additional assistance from that firm, they would charge that individual $150 an hour for consulting services. And eventually, they would place a permanent person with us, and they would charge us a placement fee for that person. So that is why we went with the smaller firm of Ms. Sellers' group, where all of those costs were capped at what you see in the document.
Okay. So Ms. Sellers' firm, you don't have a 20% finder's fee or a consultant fee when they placed that particular HR person?
We do, but we do not for, like, the, the cost of that first person is included in the bid.
If I may, the 20%, well, I don't know what the percentage is, but there is a finder's fee. But this total contract price that you're seeing before you tonight includes the first such placement without any additional cost in terms of a finder's fee.
Any further, Protam?
Yes, I got another question, but I won't think about it before I ask.
I did have.
Nicholson, then Parker.
We'll ping pong a bit. So the next closest bid, when I did my math during our conversation, the next qualified bid was $118,000 minimum. And while we say that's a very well-resourced firm, with a number of, and when you look through those bid packets, you'll see there's a number of them that are certified, number of attorneys on their team. I personally am not enthused by Ms. Sellers' team. I don't think the team has what they need, but that is a difference of $43,000 in the same time period of 12 weeks. It is a different approach. So personally, and with my career expertise, knowing what I believe we need and what the two firms have to offer, the 43, this is something that has to be done right. I mean, really right, because this is our basis and our core. These are our job descriptions, our wage analysis. I'm nervous about the wage analysis. I haven't seen that personally, but in the timeframe that it was done, I can't imagine that there, the work on it can be complete. I've never known a wage analysis in the scope that a city needs in the large, I mean, if you think about a city, we have every job you could imagine under the sun. We've got laborers, we've got attorneys, we've got teachers, we've got people teaching summer camps. I mean, every possible piece. That $43,000 is a very large sum. The difference where we met at the beginning with the average quote was, they weren't too far apart. Knowing that this person has come in and done some lead work with their beginning projects is advantageous, but knowing that it's the same time period with the same deliverables, a vast different dollar amount, but we're talking about a firm that I believe is, from what they submitted in their packet, well-resourced, very, and embedded in many communities throughout southeastern Michigan, as well as Oakland County. So from, in my personal best, you know, track forward in our conversation, I said I felt that this contract, I wasn't enthused by the team that was, that was put forth in their application. The cost difference is the part that I waver and grapple with and don't have that final answer, and I'm glad this is discussion, because I need to continue to have that on my mind.
Parker, then Carrington, then Grimal.
Thank you. As I was looking at the proposal, one of the things I noticed, what it says, that these fees do not include expenses such as mileage and hotels. So would we be getting another bill in regards to mileage and hotels?
That is a great question. If you look further into the application, there is a spot where they actually include mileage and hotel fees as well. Which I believe were about $7,000 or $8,000.
And I don't know, Deputy Mayor, if I could be of help. It's changed since our first conversation. I know she had listed a max amount of visits, and that each visit had a dollar amount.
Yeah. So max hotel not to exceed $4,950, max mileage not to exceed $2,471, and that is included in this total cost that you see.
Okay. Thank you.
Carrington, then Grimal, then James.
So outside of the price differences, what would you, what were some of the other characteristics or things that you liked about this particular firm? You had a chance to work with them for, what, four weeks?
Yeah. So I did have a chance to work directly with them for four weeks. I should also say, in fairness to the other firm, I have never worked directly with them. I have worked adjacent to them. I am aware of their work. I do think that they would do very good work. But again, National Career Group was, was much less expensive. National Career Group also had a cap to its services, as you heard the councilman say. The other firm, we calculated what the minimum would be, not what the max could be, because that, you know, you don't know how much they're actually going to need to rely on the hourly services of the firm that they would be hired by. And during the time that I worked with Ms. Sellers, I will say that she brought to my attention several items at City Hall that I was not aware of, and actually was able to fix some of them. One easy example, we had an individual who has had over two years of not getting their pay stub correct because of the pay system that we use. It was brought to Ms. Sellers, it hadn't been brought to our attention in the 30 days that, I mean, in the 60 days that we had been here, but it was brought to Ms. Sellers' attention, and she was able to figure it out that same day. And on a go-forward basis, they were able to figure out how to get this individual's time card correct, so.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my main concern is definitely the company itself. It doesn't have a lot of individuals that work for this company. I think that's one of my concerns. My other concern is that when I look at some of the references, as well as the resume, some things I had some questions on, I think I emailed you earlier, I don't know if you responded to that.
No, so.
So I won't ask you that, because I'm not trying to embarrass anybody. That's why I sent you an email, so I can get those answers from you. Basically, I don't necessarily agree with going with the lowest bidder. I think that's the wrong way to do business. I told the school district this as well. You want somebody that can come in and get everything correctly, correct at that time. I think this is too big of a project to just put in one or two people's hand, especially when I don't see any HR certifications within that immediate group. So that's basically my concern. Okay. Thank you.
Grimal, then James, then Goodman.
Well, I don't know that I have a lot to add based on what Deputy Mayor Stevens has now said, because I had raised my hand for recognition before that. I will just emphasize a couple of things. One is that, as Deputy Mayor Stevens has indicated, we do have some sense of the value add that the National Career Group brings to the table, because we have worked with them for the period of four weeks. And not only did they provide a number of insights into deficient HR practices in previous years, and not only did they provide a number of suggested concrete financial savings from changing some of those practices, but they have also provided a number of insights into pathways to insourcing positions and work that has been outsourced, and they have delineated some of the potential cost savings from doing so. So that certainly has been a positive experience. The other thing that I would say is that the next lowest bid was over 50% more expensive. That alone isn't definitive to Councilman Protam, President Protam, I should say, Carrington's point. that the most important thing is value add. I would just ask, and I think it's something that all of us need to ask ourselves, is does the second lowest bidder provide more than a 50% additional value add compared to the National Career Group? In terms of the number of employees that are being brought to bear, keep in mind, as Deputy Mayor Stevens pointed out, that just because the firm is bigger doesn't mean that they'll have more people working here in the city of Pontiac. So in terms of the number of employees and staff that they're dedicating to the city of Pontiac, that is the more important question.
Councilman James.
Yeah, I guess I want to clarify, originally when the young lady made the presentation, this is the same firm that she made the presentation several weeks ago?
Yes, ma'am.
And I was of the impression that this was a temporary, that they were stepping in on a temporary basis to help us to get some, some, some things done in the HR department, to get some things cleaned up and organized in that department. I guess I'm not sure exactly what, what, so is this a temporary contract? Or are we now looking to utilize them as the HR department?
So that is a great question, and so let me, let me go back. So they came in for four weeks. And during the course of those four weeks, as the mayor said, they found a number of HR changes that we can make that would be cost-saving for the city. During the course of those four weeks, they, they filed a number of delinquent pieces of paperwork that we had. They helped us with a good number of policies and procedures that we needed to update and were lacking. There's only so much that you can do during four weeks. And during, during that four-week period, we had some other changes that, that took place. And it was always the intention, when we, when they came in during that four-week period, that we would do an RFP process and we would bring in a company, whether it be them or whether it be someone else, to be here for a longer period of time to help us do all of the other things that we needed to have done.
Okay, so what is the estimate on the RFP, the timeframe for the RFP?
So the, this, this will only last to the end of this fiscal year, and we will have a new permanent HR director hired by the end of this contract.
And I just finally would like to say that these are folks that our deputy mayor has worked with and feels comfortable working with. And if you know anything about him, if he's satisfied with their performance and, and with their ability to do what he thinks needs to be done, then I'm comfortable with it at this point. So just want to make that comment.
Councilman Goodman.
I just want to highlight that I have one of the same concerns as Council Pro Tem Carrington when it comes to some of their resumes. And not, not to bicker with the administration, you know, to pointing out that National Career Group could come in and fix some of the issues that comes to HR, I would make the argument that any firm worth their salt could have done that as well. So, you know, again, not to, you know, make an argument or to, to put down the firm. It's just not a, a life-changing realization to know that a firm that has some quality can outdo what was happening in the previous administration.
Order. I think it's Nicholson now.
Sorry, I'm back again. So it's, it's, to me, there's always, in any consulting gig, you come in and there's low-hanging fruit, and you clear that out first, you make your big win, people are impressed by that. That's, that's good. That's what should happen. I have, my, my biggest concerns are when I think about a consulting opportunity and I look at that actual contract, the RFP, the bid that was submitted, and I look at that, there is, there is a firm, and then I think there's a person. It's my personal perspective on looking at that org chart, especially because I see some last names that are similar. I look at the resumes and I don't see the expertise that would take to be qualified to make HR decisions. I think that they have other very interesting experiences, but if I was hiring an HR person, I would have passed those resumes shuffling through a pile. So are we going to say that a 12-week engagement for an individual is worth $75,000 for this individual based on these deliverables? But we had a gentleman earlier that we did a $10,000, you know, $20 an hour based on his deliverables as a one-person gig. Then we have a firm, and I get that they're not contributing all of those resources, but you have a brain trust available of people who are qualified that they can ask questions to and get that, that resource. I, and, and this, as this conversation develops, I didn't see placement guarantees in any of the contracts either. So we have a real, a real problem where, let's say, one of them comes in and the guarantee, or the, the agreement is it's 20% of the person's first annual salary, base salary. We pay that fee. Three months down the line, the person takes off or says, this doesn't work for me. And that, you know, that's a real possibility. That person could leave, and we spent all of this money recruiting them. When, you know, I do a direct placement, I do a placement guarantee where as time moves on, the city recoups less of that if that person doesn't work out, and it's usually industry standards between 90 and 120 days to get through that onboarding process and really settle in and know what they're in for. So I would say if either of them have the interest in a placement guarantee, that would make me more comfortable with the recruitment aspect of this. But otherwise, I'm just really not impressed with the roster of professionals in that group for these deliverables, especially a wage analysis, especially job descriptions. I mean, these are things that have legal ramifications attached to them, and to have somebody who's not certified, maybe they've, I mean, I think there's a lot of people who don't have certifications or qualifications that do really good work. I don't want to put my baby in their care. That's my piece.
I didn't know you had a baby. Others that wish to have the floor? Is there a motion to postpone for one week?
I make the motion to postpone for one week.
Support.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington, that we postpone the motion before us for one week to the April 12, 2022 council meeting. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? Deputy Mayor Stevens.
So if I may, if we are going to postpone for one week, I would ask two things. One, I would ask, does the council want to have a alternate resolution available next week for the second company? And two, I would ask, what other information would the council like to see to continue to consider this particular resolution?
Anyone wish to have the floor? Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman, President Pro Tem. Other cities have Mayor Pro Tem.
Don't, don't say, don't say mayor, then you have people running around like, he wants to be mayor. But I would say that I would, I would definitely like to see another resolution ready for the second, the second group, just, just in case we don't go with the first one. You also mentioned, I did send an email. You can kindly answer that email. It'll be enough for me.
Mayor Grimald.
Yeah, we would gladly prepare that resolution for the other group as well. I do want to emphasize that we have a lot of important work that needs to be done in this realm. And it's essential that we have un-HR firm onboard as soon as possible, doing that work. As has already been alluded to by other city council people, there was a lot of HR dysfunction that we walked into as an administration. And so yes, there, on the one hand, that is reflected in the fact that people have said there's low-hanging fruit, or was low-hanging fruit. But it also speaks to the fact that there is a lot of additional work that has to be done in this realm, in this area, in this space. And so it's essential that we have un-HR firm onboard to do that. And so we would just ask that, one way or the other, at the next council meeting, the city council approve one of the firms that applied and presented a proposal to city council.
A follow-up question. We have it identified that this is for discussion. The expectation was that we'd have the opportunity for discussion and then voting next week. Is there concern about us, us making the decision next week? Or your point is just that beyond next week is very problematic?
Yep. My only point is that beyond next week would be very problematic. So I would just ask that at next week's city council meeting, that city council approve one of the firms that submitted a proposal.
Understood. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for one week? Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call on that motion to postpone for one week. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2021-22, transferring $15,250 out of the general fund, fund balance GL account 101000390.000, and $12,500 is transferred to the general fund GL account 101171702.000, salaries and wages, and $1,250 is transferred to the GL account 101171715.000, FICA, and $1,500 to the GL account 101171716.000, medical insurance. This proposed budget amendment is to fund the public relations and event specialist position in the mayor's office.
I make the motion.
Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Rutherford, seconded by Carrington. That motion is before us. We, as a council, previously did the adoption of the posting for this budget amendment, so it's not the first conversation. We've also done the approving of the position creation in the mayor's office. And anything further that the administration would like to elaborate on for this budget amendment for the balance of the fiscal year?
No additional discussion here.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council? It's essentially a carry-on and a continuation of a previous actions that the council has taken. Hearing no further discussion, speakers list exhausted. Roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the proposed budget amendment. Clerk Doyle.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish notice of a proposed budget amendment for the fiscal year 2021-22 to transfer $30,000 out of the general fund, fund balance GL account 101000390.000, and $30,000 is transferred to the general fund economic development department GL account 101690818.000, other professional services to cover contractual services from Baker Tilly.
I make the motion, but I have a question.
Okay, it's been moved?
Support.
It's been seconded. Councilman Rutherford.
So are we going to change the way that this is wrote so that we actually write it correctly?
Well, let's, let's pull it up, but in the meantime, mayor administration, you want to queue up what we're dealing with?
Yes, so as, as was mentioned earlier, and I have this in front of me, so I want to make sure I have the right date. In 2020, there was a resolution to approve a budget amendment to increase budget revenues in the amount of $100,000 to the general fund in account 101000532.000. Grant income and appropriations in the amount of $100,000 to general fund account. The city received a $100,000 grant from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan to support the development of an internal grants management process and system. It was properly moved and supported. There were all ayes and no nays resolution passed. So the city council approved, accepting of the grant for this purpose, and did not approve later the, the increased amount of the contract that the former mayor had entered into. But the former mayor did enter into a larger expense contract, and we are now asking for the funds to cover those larger expenses.
Mayor Grimald.
Yeah, I don't want to be redundant with what Deputy Mayor Stevens has said, and I'm sorry I had to step out of the room briefly. But the, the short answer to some of the comments that were made earlier by the previous city council president is that the city council did budget $100,000 for the purpose of, of these contracts, but did not budget the additional $30,000. Despite that fact, the previous mayor moved forward with hiring two firms, each of which was paid $65,000. And so the previous mayor spent $30,000 more than was budgeted by the city council. And the city council budgeted the $100,000 in the form of a grant that was received by the city. So that's where that $100,000 came from. But the city council never budgeted the additional $30,000, the previous mayor, for reasons that I can't explain. Nonetheless, moved forward with a total expenditure amount of $130,000, two contracts and the amount of $65,000 each. I want to emphasize that we have not utilized one of those two firms since taking office, and the other firm has been funded entirely through grant dollars, is my understanding, such that we have not incurred any city-side expense for either of the two firms since taking office.
Legislative Council Sharp, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I wanted to see if you could provide any further sort of historical context. And, and if I'm remembering correctly, if the council took explicit, oh, I think you did some research and you can elaborate further on what became of the Baker-Tilly element of that too.
My recollection is a little bit different in that they accepted the grant of $100,000. Both of those positions were presented to council. They didn't act on either one. So it was not anticipated to act on one, which was 65, because the resolution that was presented was for 65,000, not 100,000. And they didn't act on it at all. So it was not the pleasure of the council to accept either of those contracts.
So we're confronted with the situation that not only was it in excess of the grant funding that was received, but it was pursuing contracts with entities that was never explicitly authorized by the prior city council to sort of capture what we're dealing with. So I don't know that we need to change the language on the resolution. We just want to make, make it crystal clear, you know, in terms of this and future actions when we take it. Because when I'm reading the language, I don't see that there's any, you know, factual misrepresentation. We just want to make sure that what's really going on is, is fully out there.
Yeah.
Mayor Grimald.
Well, it's, it's a very good point that Ms. Sharp is raising. There, there really, I think Ms. Sharp's point, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Sharp, is that there are really two issues at play here. One is the budgeting of dollars. And in terms of that, although the city council budgeted in fall of 2020, $100,000 out of the $130,000, so there's a budgeting issue here in terms of they're lacking $30,000 worth of, of budgeting amounts. But in addition, I think Ms. Sharp is, is bringing up another distinct point, which is in terms of the contracting approval by city council, that city council may not have approved either of these two contracts. And to the extent that that's the case, we'll look into that. And to the extent that we need to come back before council with approval of the contract for the other two individuals who the city had used, and frankly, continues to use, we'll come back with that. Now, I want to emphasize that Now, I wanna emphasize that the one contracted entity, Baker Tilly, has not been utilized by the city since I took office, and they have this outstanding invoice from services that were provided under the previous mayoral administration. The other duo of individuals who have been providing consulting have not been incurring any payables that's owed by the city, in terms of city dollars, since I've taken office. But you raise a good point, I was under the impression, Ms. Sharp and members of council, that their contract had been approved by council, but if that's not the case, we will wanna make sure that that's being rectified. I don't know offhand if their current arrangement or contract is with the city, or if it's with an outside funder, and we'll look into that, and to the extent that their contract is with the city, then if they have not had that contract approved by the past city council, we'll wanna make sure that we're bringing that before the city council for approval. If their contract is not with the city, but is with an outside funder, that may be a different matter, but we'll look into that and bring clarification before council.
Can I just say, Mayor, that maybe possibly offline, I'm not saying you guys have to have that discussion now, and I hate to put her on the spot, but you might wanna talk to Ms. Phillips to get verification on that, in terms of the details around it.
Yeah, and certainly we have a couple of staff people here who perhaps can speak to this question, so whether Ms. Phillips or Ms. Boren Gesser, I welcome any input that you have, if you wanna take the podium.
And your question is regarding the current engagement with Philip Clay and Gabe Metrowb, is that correct?
Right, and I think more specifically, who is their contract with? Is it with the city, or is it with an outside entity? And if it is with the city, was that contract ever approved by city council?
So, there's not a contract with them now, it's a memorandum of understanding. Their work is entirely funded by the Ballmer Group, which is outlined in the MOU, and that was executed by Deirdre Waterman.
Okay, so, there is, so, if that's the case, it sounds like we need to bring something before council, because an MOU is a contract by another name, and it sounds like that was never approved by any city council, in which case, to your point, Ms. Sharp, we'll need to bring that before city council, even though it doesn't involve any city funds, if it is purportedly an MOU or contract between the city and them, it needs to be approved by city council, that's pretty clear. So, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, Ms. Sharp.
Just to be clear, the MOU clearly states that no funds from the city will be used to support their work, that all of the funding for their work from now on will be funded through the Ballmer Group, so that piece is clear.
Right, but to the extent that it's a contract with the city, I think it's immaterial who pays for it, so we'll bring that before city council.
And what we have before us tonight is the posting of the notice for the budget amendment, so we're not resolving that or adopting that now, but ladies and gentlemen, I think we're contending with a very uncomfortable and unpleasant reality, that the chickens have come home to roost once more, in terms of poor governing strategies from the past, and it's really unfortunate, because it was actually, at its heart, a really good thing, that it was about the purpose from the onset, in terms of grant funding, to help allow our internal capacity to pursue outside funding, there's merit there, but it became obviously very disruptive, the way that the previous mayor ran roughshod over the traditional norms and required processes, and so yet again, as you've heard us deal with in previous months, us, the taxpayers, are stuck with a bill in a way that services were rendered, you know, the executive of the city proceeded, but it was not done in an appropriate way in terms of through the traditional legal requirements of budgeting and of governmental checks and balances, so it's really, really brutal. Councilman Goodman?
So, I'm gonna ask Legislative Council, are there any, I guess, recommended language changes to the resolution to reflect the newfound information that you would recommend?
I mean, at this point, the problem is, I think, I'm just giving context, because as been previously stated, they've done the work, you've gotta pay it. So, does it really, at this point, matter, but to the mayor's point, in terms of making it legal and bringing it back before council for an approval, so that they can pay it, I would imagine is proper, but in terms of the resolution language, it really doesn't matter at this point.
And we won't actually be acting on the resolution until after the, so, this is essentially, our motion is just authorizing the clerk to post that there will be a budget amendment for these dollar amounts, you know, that are being considered, and we still, if we want to add more depth and context to the different clauses of the resolution before adopting it in a few weeks, we can.
Well, I think I'm making a different point slightly, so, there were contracts entered into in the past, I'm not suggesting we ratify those contracts, because I don't think any of us wanna necessarily be on, wanna go down the road of saying that those contracting decisions in the past, for services that were provided for in the past and are not currently being provided, were the right decision. We simply have services that were provided in the past, that, who, for contracts that were not approved by city council in the past, in amounts that were not funded by city council in the past, and, but nonetheless, legally, the city is on the hook to pay for those services because those services were provided, they were provided because the previous mayor pretended as though she had authority to do so, and presented herself to those contracting entities in such a way that they reasonably believed that she had authority to do so. So, that's about paying for those past services. So, I'm not suggesting that we need to come back and approve a contract for Baker Tilly. What I am suggesting is that we have been and continue to receive services through a separate consulting arrangement that is not funded with city dollars, so there's no need, or may not be a need, I guess we'll explore that, to amend the city budget to account for that, since there are no city dollars involved, but because we're receiving services pursuant to, it sounds like, a contract that the previous mayor entered into, without the previous city council or any city council's approval, I'm now discovering, even though that doesn't involve city dollars, if it's pursuant to an apparent contract or purported contract between the city and these consultants, if we wanna continue to use those consultants, we need to bring a proposed contract before city council. So, in answer to your question, Councilman Goodman, it's really a separate issue from what's before council tonight. What's before council tonight is allocating city dollars to pay a firm, Baker Tilly, that has not been used since I took office, and so it's really about budgeting dollars for payment to Baker Tilly for services rendered in the past, before any of us were in office. Separately, there is a continuing utilization of services from consultants, not utilizing city dollars at all, but pursuant to a purported contract between those consultants and the city, and if we wanna continue utilizing those services, we need to bring before council a proposed contract for your approval, and I'm only learning tonight that that contract was never approved. So, we'll bring that before you, even though it doesn't use city dollars and is entirely funded by outside funders, if it's pursuant to, if those services are being provided pursuant to a purported contract between the city and these consultants, then city council needs to approve that, obviously.
Others that wish to have the floor? All right, the motion before us is the authorize the resolution authorizing the city clerk to post the notice of the proposed budget amendment, and I would just request to my predecessor, the Honorable Kermit Williams' point earlier this evening, it's that we can now have an updated memorandum that can give us some more context prior to the actual budget amendment coming before us, and then we can just assess if there's anything we need to modify in terms of the language itself before we make that final decision, so that way the record is accurately reflected. But on the motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to do the public notice, no further discussion, roll call Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries, is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the implementation of the Flock Safety System within the city of Pontiac for a 12-month trial period?
I make the motion, but I have a question.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by James, Councilman Rutherford.
Administration, can we do a caveat, so instead of this program being for a year, that we do it for six months and then do an evaluation, and then do an additional six-month evaluation, that's my first question.
Well, if I may, a couple of things, to answer your question, Councilwoman, the answer is yes, as far as we're concerned, the mayoral administration, we're fine with whatever time period for a trial city council prefers. It may be a question for the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, and so I wanna give them an opportunity to answer that question, but also to present the basic premise of this as an informational item, but I also wanna just touch on a couple of other things in the purview of President McGinnis. Number one, I wanna just address one issue that was raised earlier in the meeting during the council agenda address, portion of the agenda. I have, for many years, been an advocate for body cameras, for law enforcement personnel in general, and I have been in communication with the county, starting at the end of last calendar year, back in November and December, and continuing into this year, and I'm very happy to announce that all sheriff's deputies throughout the entire county will begin implementing body cameras, starting in June of this year, and I have personally worked with the county to ensure that that will begin with deputies here in the city of Pontiac. So, deputies here in the city of Pontiac will be the first to utilize those body cameras beginning in June. So, I know that that addressed at least some of the stated concerns of one of the speakers earlier, who spoke on behalf of the public regarding this agenda item, so that's good news, and I wanted to get that out there, because it was a question and concern expressed by someone. The other thing that I wanna pose to the representatives from the sheriff's office who are here, is whether or not these cameras will read license plates only, which has been my understanding, or whether they will also be used to scan faces or be involved with any facial recognition, which has not been my understanding, so I wanna pose that question to them, and then I invite them, from their perspective, Councilwoman, to answer your question about the period of time for a trial period. From my administration's standpoint, we're comfortable with whatever time period for a trial period city council prefers.
And so, we'll have many more questions, but if you could give us more context on what's the program and the trial period we're talking about?
Sure. Well, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for having us. My name is Lieutenant Steve Schneider from the sheriff's office, I've been there 26 years, and I'm in charge of all technology at the sheriff's office. With me is Lieutenant Steve Jacobs, he's in charge of auto theft, as well as some of the other units there at the sheriff's office. He's been here 43 years, so, I'm just a kid, apparently. We do have representatives from Flock on the Zoom, I know we have Ryan on there, and I believe we also have a vice president of external affairs who can answer some of your questions very specifically, but as far as the license plate reader project, the license plate reader project is something that we entered into as a contract with Flock, we have 12 substations, we are going to deploy them at other substations, they are stationary only, and because Pontiac is important to us, we wanted to make sure that we gave you the opportunity to have as many as possible, so you would be the largest user of those devices. Those devices do only take pictures of license plates, of course, the rear of the car, whatever that is, but the license plate, it does not take pictures of the driver, there is no facial recognition involved, it is simply of the license plate. The license plate is then run against our normal databases, and we're looking for mostly stolen plates, stolen cars, that is the primary purpose of it. They do have a few other things, including Canadian stolen plates, Canadian stolen cars, if you have felony warrants, so if you have some major felony warrants, and we prefer to focus on major warrants, and then there is also, I believe, it queries the gang or suspected terrorist database, but the primary function of it is certainly for stolen vehicles, and that's what Lieutenant Jacobs' team works on, on a regular basis. Is there anything specific about what I've gone over so far?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
So, we have people that have, like, felonies, that may be working on turning themselves in, or whatever, and you just said that it will identify their cars, so I'm a little hesitant about that, because we have individuals, because I got cousins that's working on when they gonna turn themselves in, and then y'all have the felony assos, I mean, excuse me, let me say it right, y'all can use, like, it's kinda like you targeting them, well, not just my people, but just people in general, I don't, can you explain, like, how y'all not gonna do, is it gonna be case by case, I'm a little?
Yeah, so, it runs the plate, then it sends an email message to one of the detectives. So, frankly, we're not sitting around where the camera is, so at that point, you know, who knows where they're at, right? But the primary focus is on stolen vehicles, stolen plates, that seems to be quite a problem in the area, we know that Southfield has been utilizing this system for quite a while, is very happy with it, and has caught a lot of stolen vehicles, recovered a lot of stolen vehicles, caught people that stole the vehicles, received the vehicles, so that is the primary focus of what we're doing.
Councilman James, and then Councilman Goodman?
Yeah, when it was presented in the subcommittee meeting, that was the sole purpose, was to look at the license plates, and with the end result, to determine if that license plate is in your database as a stolen vehicle. No mention was made about felony warrants, I don't recall, I don't recall that coming up in the conversation in the subcommittee meeting.
It could be, well, it could be wanted vehicles, and frankly, if you have a murder warrant, and the plate comes back that you've got a warrant for murder, we can't exactly dismiss that, I mean, that's not, that's not okay. We're not out here looking for every single person that has a warrant, that's not the purpose of it. The purpose is primarily for the stolen plates and stolen vehicles, and we get a hot sheet from the state police, that hot sheet specifically is stolen vehicles, stolen plates. The NCIC also comes back and will hit if someone has a warrant, and again, the focus is something major. We don't really frankly have the time to chase everybody down who stole $1,000 from Home Depot, that's not, we don't have time for that, and that's not the purpose of it, that's not the purpose of his units, his units are going after major issues here, you know, gangs that are taking cars en masse from all over the place, things like that, you know, so that's what the primary focus is.
It did come up in the subcommittee in terms of it being checked against the state registry, and if there's an amber alert or other sort of?
Well, yeah, but that's not felony warrants, that did not come up.
Councilman Goodman, and then Councilman?
Can I explain something really quick, because we're talking about it runs the plate? We have to be real clear, by law, we cannot access the state database by running a plate, we can't have that plate from the license plate reader automatically run the Secretary of State or the lien file, that's why the state police publish what we call the hot sheet four times a day, and they download it to the system. That system then, as President McGinnis said, looks at amber alerts, stolen vehicles, it could be serious felony warrants, there's a few other things it looks at, but if that vehicle comes back as that plate is wanted in some way, it's incumbent on the officer to manually investigate. Councilman Rutherford had a question. Councilman Rutherford had a question regards the felony warrants. If we have a car and it comes back and says this car is wanted because there's a felony warrant on it, and it says on a male subject has this warrant, and we see a female driving the car, we don't have a probable cause to stop that vehicle. So it wouldn't be utilized for that because it's not the person we may be looking for. So there are some checks and balances in there that we have to follow, and part of that is written in our policy that Lieutenant Schneider can discuss a little more, but we just can't have the system run everybody to the state because we're not legally allowed to do that.
Councilman Goodman?
So I have a first question. It's rather straightforward. Do the Flock system cameras have the applicable ability to use, collect, or relay any identifying information other than license plates?
No.
No? None whatsoever.
So...
Can we have the answer from, can we have that answer from the company, the software company?
Absolutely. But the Flock system just takes a snapshot of the license plate and the vehicle, and then it checks it on the hot sheet, and it's incumbent on us...
So, not to cut you off, the very specific question that I'm asking is, does the technology that we will be implementing have the capability of taking and transferring identifying information other than the license plate?
It's my understanding, no, but Ryan is online. Can you hear us, Ryan?
This is Bailey with Flock.
Okay.
Should you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Did you hear the question?
The question was about identifying information?
Correct. Correct.
And the, thank you, the lieutenant's description is accurate, that the cameras are positioned to take a picture of the back of the vehicle, reading the characters on the license plate, identifying the plate of the license plate because it's important for accurately producing a type of word, so the combination...
So, not to cut you off again, I feel that this is a very yes or no question. The question that I'm asking is, does the technology that we will be implementing have the ability to capture or transfer information beyond the license plate data? Does it have the capability? Not what we will implement it to do, what we will intend to use it for, does it have the ability? Yes or no?
The only ability that it has is take a picture of the back of the car and transfer that into the system. The system is owned by the customers of this place, the sheriff.
Okay, so I'll move on to my next question. When you bring up, actually, this one's more of a comment, when you bring up gangs and, you know, possible terrorists, unfortunately, those terms have been used rather liberally when it comes to black and brown people. I mean, again, we passed a resolution today, you know, calling for April to be Arab-American History Month, yet the label of terrorists has been thrown around towards them very frequently. As a black person who has grown up poor in a city of color, I guarantee you that I have been called a thug or a gang member more times than I have probably heard myself. So when we have the conversation of, oh, this is meant to identify those groups of people, we don't have the best track record in terms of figuring out who those people are in the first place. So saying that...
We actually do.
Doesn't...
It's, this, you know, when we say, when we say...
Well, sorry, I was taking a drink for that. Councilman Goodman has the floor.
Go ahead. So the thing that I bring to is just that it doesn't instill confidence in me to hear that as one of the deciding factors. Again, I understand how many communities and groups may look at that. However, coming from where I do, I have the informed life experience that is different than many people up here on this dais, as well as you at the podium. So hearing that and representing the group of people who I do in the city that I've lived for my entire life, minus all the four months, I have a very specific opinion, and again, informed opinion from the life that I and many other people have had to live. So then to my last point, when you bring up, you know, looking at this data to look at these cars, and, you know, we live in a community where many people don't have access to a car solely on their own, so they use the vehicles of other people that they know, whether they be family, friends, acquaintances, because, to be very honest, it is not possible to live a actual life in southeast Michigan without a car. So what do we do to protect people who are using the cars of someone else? Because again, you point out that the process, as you said before, you wouldn't do that. The issue is, a lot of times, wouldn't and shouldn't are kind of misconstrued. You know, I need more protection for my people besides, you know, what shouldn't happen because the thing is, I wish I could take the face value of this wouldn't happen if these are the criteria. However, as we've seen throughout history, throughout court proceedings, throughout the past couple of years, there has become a very, very thin and hard-to-seen line for some people between shouldn't and wouldn't. And having that knowledge, this is still scary to me. So again, I'll give you the floor to have your chance to speak, but I wanted to make sure that everyone, including yourself, could hear my concerns and comments.
Okay. First of all, on the gang or suspected terrorists, those are specific lists that are mandated as far as the control of them by the FBI. So you can't just put somebody in there because you feel like it. There's a whole bunch of criteria, how long they can sit in those lists, when they come out of those lists. Most of those lists are not generated by us. They're generated by the FBI or major task forces. But again, those are controlled lists. So I don't want you to think that, you know, we think that this gentleman might be involved in a gang, so we're going to throw him in there. We can't do that. It's against the law. So we don't, we're not going to do that. I'm not going to break the law and get in trouble for that. That just doesn't make sense. So that's all controlled by the FBI as far as how that goes in there. As far as the cars, you were talking about stolen vehicle, for example, and someone else was driving it. We would...
It doesn't necessarily have to be a stolen vehicle, just to make a point of clarification. You did mention how people may have warrants or felonies.
Sure.
You can have a family member or friend who has a warrant or felony that you were not aware of...
Sure.
...and decide to use their vehicle.
Sure, sure. Yeah, well, and if they don't, you know, if they don't fit the description, then they shouldn't be stopping the vehicle. Again, like you said, if it's a female and it's a male warrant, then why are you stopping the car? Because a female's driving the car, it doesn't make any sense. Shouldn't be doing that. You don't have probable cause to believe that person is the person in the warrant, so you shouldn't be stopping the car.
Please, could we have order in the chamber because I really try to hear everything that's been said so we can make an intelligent decision on this particular item?
And again, if I may, if I ever lost it, that still brings me to the concern, as you pointed out in your language use, between what shouldn't happen and what wouldn't happen.
Sure.
As a teacher, well, as a former teacher, I wouldn't do something that caused any immediate danger to my students because as a teacher, I have a job requirement to not do that. Now, I shouldn't yell at my students. Those are two very different lines. So again, I need something beyond, well, here's what shouldn't and wouldn't happen. I need something that actually protects the people of my city who this may affect because while we may make the comment that this is directed towards a very specific part of the population, there is room for error. And the last thing that I want, sitting on this, on council and as a person in general, the last thing I want is for some egregious error to be made that could have easily been avoided, that causes a loss of life, doesn't matter of who, but specifically in the City of Pontiac, we know who the likely person is. And again, I have concerns with that.
Okay. So I wrote the policy. I wrote the policy in conjunction with Oakland County Corporation Council attorneys, and it was based on the Department of Justice model. The Department of Justice model takes into account all these various factors, and when you write that policy, I can assure you that in that policy, if you screw up, you're in trouble. We make sure that everybody signs for that policy, and it's very clear on what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. And besides myself, I have a technical assistant, and between the two of us, we're the only ones who are allowed to be administrators on the actual system. And then we monitor the system, and if we find any improprieties, then we bring that up, we take that up with them, and we take it up with their command, and then we address it from there. And our department has never been shy about writing you up or disciplining you or bringing to your attention that you're not following the policy, and there's going to be something that's going to happen. You can't just ignore the policy and expect that you're not going to get in trouble. That's not how it works. So...
I'll go with the floor for now.
We have Parker, then Carrington, then Rutherford, then Nicholson, then James. Parker?
Thank you, brother president. Just a couple of questions. How y'all doing?
Good, good.
How is the placement of your cameras determined?
That was probably best answered by Flock because they have the exact on that, but it is under their specifications as far as height, et cetera.
Are you talking location?
I'm talking about location placement.
Locations, I utilized my auto theft team, and they went through the city of where they have the most incidents, and that's where they picked the areas that they wanted to have them at.
Okay. Can your equipment be hacked?
I leave that to Flock representatives. I don't believe so. It's cellular, but...
Did you say it's cellular?
Ryan or Bailey?
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
He wants to know if our system can be hacked, Flock?
So the cameras use cellular to communicate with the cloud, that images taken by the camera are encrypted during transit, and then there's, you know, a very long list of security measures to protect the...
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me.
So we've bonded great links to protect that.
You're giving me all the technical jargon. The question was yes or no. Can your equipment be hacked?
Don't make disrespectful.
We've taken measures where we do not...
Okay. So what happens after the equipment, after the trial ends? Do you remove it?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I have a point of order. Can we ask that these gentlemen turn their cameras on? I get the sense that they're either not hearing us or they're not actively participating.
There's a lot, there's a reasonable amount of background noise. I'm sorry, I want to make sure I hear that question clearly.
So you're refusing to turn the camera on?
The question was, can you turn your cameras on?
I don't, you think you have to do anything?
Yes, if you want to.
And also, point of information for Councilman Parker, it is, in my opinion, as a now-former IT professional, that to your question, if it can be hacked, I would make the argument that most, if not all, things that are connected to the internet in some form or fashion can be hacked. The question is, what have, I'd say the better question is, what have they done to minimize that? But to your concern, I would answer yes. The question is just...
Well, he hasn't answered yes, and that would get me to my B point if he would answer my first question.
Well, I think, I think that, I think as we've learned, just about anything can be hacked, right? But I will tell you that we've taken every possible precaution because I'm even mandating that the SIM cards that go on the side of that are FirstNet. FirstNet is a law enforcement-only or fire and law enforcement-only product that's run by AT&amp;T, and all communications with FirstNet are encrypted from end to end. So we start with that, and then we move to their secure cloud, which is an FBI CGIS-compliant cloud. So it falls under FBI rules as far as how they keep that information secure, at rest and in transit, as we call it, as it's moving and then at rest. So all of, every single thing you can imagine that is supposed to be done is being done when it comes to the data.
Here we go.
Here we go.
Okay. My next question is, was, in regards to, and you said it was ran by AT&amp;T?
That's the service, the cellular service. AT&amp;T is the provider for the federal government that controls FirstNet. FirstNet is a federally-controlled system, cellular system that we use.
And so when you gather all this data, is there a separate bank that each city goes into, or they all just group together?
That's a, the, each city's system is separate. So in this case, Oakland County Sheriff, the cameras that they're utilizing that are part of their system are separate and controlled by them.
Okay. And so my next question is, once the trial period is over, what happened with the cameras?
You got to pay for them.
Either Oakland County Sheriff will choose to continue the cameras after the trial period or will...
So if we decide not to use them, you'll remove them?
Correct.
And after the trial period, what's the cost of your service?
It's $2,500 per camera per year.
How much?
$2,500.
Per camera per year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're at Carrington now.
Well, thank you, President McGinnis. Just, I've got one or two questions. The first question, you say Southfield, Warren, Flint, and Wyoming are currently using the Flock Safety System? And other cities like Waterford and Farming Hills are preparing to install those in their particular communities?
Correct.
Okay. So from a data standpoint, have you, do you know any city that actually has kept data concerning the use of these cameras? And what has been the success rate of that particular system? Has it reduced crime or deterred crime or any of those things?
Yes, I don't believe we have specific data, but I know that in our conversations with them, Southfield, for example, has been very happy, and they found a reduction in crime, and they have recovered many stolen vehicles. So a lot of the other agencies have reported the same. Nobody's reported negativity, really. We haven't had anybody say they didn't like it and it was worthless or anything like that. They've all been very happy with the results.
Okay. So I've definitely been, you know, I know this was going to be kind of like the buzz tonight, so I definitely looked at it from both sides. I'm pretty neutral, and I like to see both sides of opinion before I make a decision. American Civil, American Civil Rights Union did have some, did have some kind of privacy concerns, which definitely, that's their job.
Sure.
That's what they do, so...
Sure.
I'm putting that in this corner here. Some of the other advantages of the system, I did see that some cities were able to locate missing children. I did see some of that from what I researched today. So you guys saying that you got a contract set up, basically, you wrote that particular document where, who can utilize this information, right? And how you use this information, right? Is there any possible way you can get that document to the council just so us to have some clarity on what was written?
I'll have to send it to you.
Okay.
Sure.
No problem. Because this is only for discussion tonight, right? If I'm not mistaken.
That's our expectation, that we will postpone it for one week and consider up or down on the 12th of April. Councilman Rutherford?
Okay, I asked the question 15 minutes ago. I still haven't got my answer. Can the contract be a six-month trial period, and then we evaluate it at six months?
I believe it can be whatever you want it to be. You're a city council, you can do whatever you want.
Number two, the, he mentioned the ACLU article. I know that because I sent it to him, but there was an article wrote about this particular camera system in the Washington Post.
Okay.
There's also been some complaints in the Seattle, hold on, the Seattle Times. And so my question is, we can't say it hasn't been any complaints when it has been some. And we also have to recognize that there have been several lawsuits against this company because of the way that it's been used inappropriately in certain areas. And so my question is, how do we get the actual day-to-time data so that we can do a good decision? Because I don't want it to come off that I don't want it to prove, that's not what this is about. What I want it to do, because I want safety in my neighborhoods and all that, what I have, but I don't want to happen, is what they're having the issue in Seattle, especially it's been used against the homeless population, and what's been happening in Washington, D.C. as well. So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned about that part of it.
Sure. I think, I think in my research, when I do these policies, my attitude, which the sheriff agrees with, is best practice. What is best practice when you write these policies? If you go to Seattle or some of these places and you look up their policies, sometimes not so good. I even looked at Detroit's policy, and what happens with Detroit is, they get sued a lot, they have things happen, and then they take it to attorneys and they rewrite them again and do it the way they should have in the first place. And so to avoid that, again, I go right to the Department of Justice, right? Who's going to be mad at me? Who's coming? It's the FBI and the Department of Justice. And the Department of Justice, you can go right there and say, what is a model policy? How do I write this policy? What is the appropriate... What is the appropriate thing to do and not do? And that's what I did. And then I went to Corporation Counsel and sat with one of our attorneys and said, this is what I did. She checked my work and said, yes, you did. And then she said, I love it. I don't like this. I don't like this. Change this. You know? So, we did our due diligence on that. In addition, I have the privacy officer for the sheriff's office working for me. So, whether it's PII, personal information of a person, whether it's HIPAA...
Thank you.
Or whether it's criminal justice information, not only did I write that policy, but in that policy, it, it not only says what you can and cannot release, but we have to sign an affidavit or an attestation sheet that says, if you screw up, if you release this information, you are facing termination or criminal charges.
Okay. I appreciate that.
So, we're, we're definitely all over that. And then my, my privacy officer is constantly looking, what's going on out there? What's going on on our network drives? Where do people have access to this, access to that? She takes access away. She gives access when it's appropriate. We have a, an attitude of, it's a need-to-know basis.
Okay.
So, for example, if you go to a network drive and there's all these folders, just because you're the sheriff doesn't mean you get to be in the folder.
Okay.
You're in the folder if you need to be in the folder.
Okay.
Otherwise, you don't get in the folder and that includes me. I'm, I'm in charge of all this and I'm not in most of the folders because I don't have a need to be in there. So, we are definitely very much on top of that whole privacy issue and trying to make sure that these policies are appropriate and best practice in the nation. And then there are ramifications if you don't follow them.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure I had the content so that the citizens know that we're doing our due diligence just to ask some tough questions.
Yep, absolutely.
So, I appreciate you. Thank you.
Can I get two seconds?
Sure.
Here's my brother. Hey, I want to make sure the council administration know we're, we hear your concerns and we understand that you have concerns and that's why we want to be totally open. We have no problem with providing you with reports, weekly, monthly, whatever you want, or even have you come out and get in a car with us as city council or as the mayor's office and see how this system works. We want to be totally open. It's a trial period. It's something new for us that we haven't utilized before, so we want our partners to be part of this also. And as we said earlier, the city of Pontiac is very important to us, so we wanted to make sure we included you. But we also want you to understand that we're hearing you when you're giving concerns. We take them, your concerns, no matter how you say them, very seriously.
Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson, Councilman James, Mayor Grimal.
So, the Southfield Police Department uses this technology?
Yes, sir.
Are we working with them and understanding challenges, best practices that they've developed?
Well, we actually have our South End Auto Theft, which Lieutenant's in charge of, is out of the Southfield Police Department. The, the crew that handles the South End is down there and so they're always involved with the Southfield Police.
And they do report to me directly, so...
So, in any trial, there's success and failure. What means success for this trial?
I, I would say deterring crime. Being, for us, from an auto theft team, is being able to recover vehicles, prevent vehicles from being stolen. It goes a little farther because it does pick up on a little other things, but it assists our officers where we're limited in the amount of officers we have on these teams to be able to find these vehicles more readily than we would if we tried to saturate an area. I don't want to, I don't know how many people I have on each team because it'll show our limitations, but we, we're not large where we can go out in a big group and do this. Utterly, you know that we, we have a license plate reader system from a different company onto undercover vehicles that are utilized all over the county by various departments. So, it's...
So, you're saying you have a similar technology that's mobile currently?
Right.
And that is deployed in Pontiac currently?
It's not deployed in Pontiac right now. It can be...
So, those cars never come through Pontiac, those undercover cars?
They could come through Pontiac.
They could. Okay. So, they probably do. Earlier, one of our residents gave us a digital image analysis request form that can be made to the Michigan State Police. Is this information available to the Michigan State Police when we take pictures regardless of whether or not the pictures have to be stored somewhere, right? Are they subject to FOIA? What's the, what are the, could somebody fill out this request form and get pictures just to see who's in their neighborhood?
No. No, that's, that's a state police form?
Yep. Yep. It even actually allows you to request facial recognition and watch list entry and photo lineups.
That's for citizens?
Uh-huh. It's, it's available, it's, it's available on their website.
We don't have that form.
Okay.
We don't use that form.
The data we have in our system is purged. We don't maintain it. It's purged for, right now, I think Flock's, Flock is 30 days.
30 days.
So, we don't maintain that, so if somebody was to request something, I don't think it would meet the FOIA standards. I guess we'd have to talk to our Corporation Counsel about it, but it's, the information may not be there.
Okay. What would make me comfortable, just because I like to give a suggestion, is if, while we continue to consider this at the next opportunity to bring up this item, Southfield being a majority minority city as well, someone from that community who's active with the system, I would, I think we would all have questions for the, for them if they're open to coming and speaking to us.
Yeah, and one of the, I think, bigger users, and I'd have to ask Ryan how many they have, I think Flint is actively using theirs too.
Great. Yeah. Excellent.
Councilman James, Mayor Grimal, Councilman Goodman?
My question is, as a city, do we get to choose the range of what this system can do? I know the system has capability, but can we limit the range of what the system would do for this particular trial?
Yeah, Tom. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I, I think, you know, some of the things that have been communicated is, you know, you mentioned that, you know, you've, you've checked your rules with the FBI and, and with the Department of Justice, but those groups don't always show the equity and inclusion for African-American communities like they should. So, we have concerns that reach beyond what they would point out. And I am concerned with some of, a part of the range. Initially, we talked about the license plates and I saw value in that in terms of, you know, because we're trying to help our community to be safer. I saw value in that, in that it could help us to, just to be able, because a lot of crimes that are committed are committed with stolen vehicles. And it would be, I think, a positive impact on the crime in our area to be able to, to pinpoint, you know, people who are driving around in stolen vehicles and possibly even to get some things, you know, corrected even before they happen, you know, prevented before they happen. So, the, the system does have value, but I want to know, can we limit the range? Because I'm concerned about your hot sheet. I'm concerned that beyond the license plate, that you're going to now begin to take your hot sheet and look at felony convictions and look at a lot of other things that I don't think we really want to get into. I don't think we do. So, my question is, can we limit the scope of your, of your, you know, what you're going to do? We should be able to do that. I mean, you don't have to buy the total capacity of a system. We can, can we just lock in on that basic capability of reading the license plates, of being able to measure those against, you know, what the hot sheet would be saying as far as stolen vehicles, but not go into this whole issue of felonies? Because I think that would be problematic. It would leave a lot to the discretion of the officers and I'm not sure that we even want to go there for a trial. So, can you limit? That's my question.
Yeah. We had a conference call with a different representative of Flock in regards to that and we were told that we can limit and we can shut off certain things. We, we can't look at criminal history data, so we can't see somebody's criminal history, but we can shut off the terrorist part. We can turn off felony warrants. So, we're told that we can actually turn that stuff off.
That's correct, Janet.
Thank you.
Good question. Mayor Grimal?
Well, that's exactly what I was going to bring up, is that I asked the exact same question of the lieutenants when we spoke last week and they indicated that the system allows for selective filtering of what vehicles are flagged based on different criteria so that certain criteria can be turned on and off. And to more precisely answer your question, Councilwoman, this is before counsel for consideration in terms of councils granting permission for or not, for locating these devices on city property and public right-of-way. And city council could, if it chose to, stipulate that the devices can be located on city property or in public right-of-ways controlled by the city, but only pursuant to certain conditions such as only some criteria being utilized to flag vehicles for purposes of further investigation by the Sheriff's Department. So, that is certainly an option. The other question that I wanted to pose is to the lieutenants, which is, I know you've, you've mentioned a number of other communities that have utilized this, either communities patrolled by the Sheriff's Department where it's been utilized or, in the case of Southfield and Flint, for example, communities that are not generally patrolled by the Sheriff's Department where it's been utilized by a city-based police department. And I'm curious how long it's been utilized in some of those communities. So, I think having a sense too of how long it's been utilized in some of those communities as we seek to gather additional information from those communities would be helpful as well to know, hey, have they had three months of experience or three years of experience? Would be helpful as we seek to, to understand how much credence to put into the length and quality of the experience of other communities.
I think the length of time that Michigan or even outstate, we'd have to rely on Flock for that because we're not a party to the other contracts or, or, we haven't seen them. So, Ryan or Bailey?
I don't have the specific dates for the Michigan agencies. We are newer in Michigan. We've been in other parts of the country for five years. I have run north to Michigan, so we have agencies that have been using that for three, four years and then some that are less than Michigan as a different state, but in terms of length of experience, we'd be pointing towards other agencies in California, Texas, Georgia, others where there's a longer length that we...
Yeah, I can add real quick. Flint, the city of Flint's used Flock since last April. That was our first law enforcement partner in Michigan. Southfield joined on in May. City of Kalamazoo came on in June, as well as the city of Dearborn. So, those are our longer tenured partners within Michigan.
Councilman Goodman?
So, to that, so is this, is this the county sheriff's first use of Flock as the sheriff itself?
Correct.
So, that, so again, for me, that causes some concern because I would rather not, I'd rather Pontiac not be a trial for things that, again, can cause actual damage. And to the point, not to debate, you know, length of use in Michigan communities because, again, this is your first time being here, that's just the, the nature of expansion. However, I do find concern in the fact that the communities that we are mentioning as they also use it have been using it for, at this point, less than a year. Am I correct?
Are you, I don't know who you're asking, but that's what the math sounds like to me. If the first community was April of last year, it would be less than a year.
So, in, in my opinion, when it comes to things like this, I, I don't think that you can gather enough data and information on how to proceed in less than a year. I mean, again, back to my experience as a teacher, you, you, you do grade level growth by quarters and by years. High school is tracked over the span of four years. So, when it comes to this, I, again, have concern of approving something with the, the actual implement, implementation time of the people who will be implementing it for our case, this being the first time and it being a trial, and then outwardly being less than a year in the state, well, in the communities that we're discussing. So, again, that also causes some concern and some, some pushback.
My questions are, my understanding is that the Oakland County Sheriff's Department is entering into this trial and will have X number of cameras, so that if Pontiac were to reverse course, the cameras that would otherwise go to Pontiac, you would then be able to redeploy to Highland Township, Rochester Hills, et cetera, because my understanding is that some of those communities, you are placing cameras, correct?
Right. And we also have other communities that want to take part in it, but...
It's important, since we have Flock representatives here this evening, and if I need to reiterate the question, and I apologize for any sort of technological or audio challenges with your participation, but a member of our community raised the question about Flock in terms of the Sparrow system, the Falcon system, and the Talon action. And I was curious if you can give us context on which would be applicable, if any, or if those are all private consumer uses, so that way we can understand the sort of phraseology nuance of the Flock options throughout the country.
For sure. So, I, the bird, the bird things, but the Falcon is the law enforcement camera model, so it tends to be on busier roads, that's what's under discussion here. Sparrow, similar design for typically residential settings of a neighborhood or a neighborhood proved in HSA, apartment complex, shopping center, those types of customers will, will often choose to put in their own cameras. And that the Sparrow model is designed for those cases to hit more neighborhood, practical point, but a similar functionality to the Falcon camera. The Talon refers to, it's actually a name that we discontinued, but it refers to investigative function system for law enforcement. When agencies choose to, to share data, which is up to agencies, it allows searching since suspects can travel, often can travel across jurisdictional boundaries.
Other, Councilman Nicholson?
In the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, who investigates wrongdoing or, or violations of policy? Is that the undersheriff?
It goes to our majors and up to the sheriff and then they're investigated by a unit, the investigative unit that I'm, not people that report to me, but report to my partner and other lieutenant and they, they're called special investigations.
Are there members, are there people of color in that group?
SIU?
SIU.
I'm trying to think who's in there. There are, there are people that are from other nationalities in that group.
Okay.
That are, you know, from elsewhere in the world.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor? Well, I'd like the Flock representatives to report to your supervisors that you spent four and a half hours and hopefully you'll get credit for your workplace participation. This is something that we can modify and revise in terms of the language and so I think it's very, could be very helpful for us to consider additional language so that we can tailor it specifically for if Pontiac is to approve the use of the right-of-ways through what parameter and through what period of time. So, you've heard a few different lines of questions or, or data and, and policy language that could be very helpful for this council's deliberation, so if you could provide that... could be very helpful for this council's deliberation, so if you could provide that between now and, I would say, Friday morning, because that's when we're sort of finalizing the composition of our agenda packets. But we'll take it earlier if you have it. And that's all to say, Councilman Goodman?
I just want to make a point that on the... I just want to make a point that on the agenda, like, it is listed as for discussion and action today. Just did want to highlight that.
Yeah, that's not our plan. I think that was submitted in error by the administration.
I'll make a motion to postpone this for one week.
And second? It's been moved, it's been moved to postpone for one week and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Mayor Grimal?
Other, I just wanted to emphasize, it was not our intention to submit it for discussion and action. So when I realized that it was described that way on the agenda, I brought it to the attention of President McGinnis and President Pro Tem Carrington to alert them that that was a mistake, either on our end or on the clerk's end, I don't know whose.
All right, there's a motion to postpone for one week. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call on that postponement. Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yes, no no.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your time and thoroughly answering our questions. We look forward to more information to come, and sayonara to Flock, unless you would like to hear what the mayor and city council have to say further. I am going to do a motion to recess for 60 seconds, because, or, I could just do that?
Resess.
If you want to take it.
I just have to use the restroom, so.
Okay, all right. Sounds like the council would like a recess for 90 seconds. How about that? Motion to recess for 90 seconds.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call real quick. Clerk Doyle.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Upstate.
That's just me.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Six yes, one upstate.
He's got to bend that. He's decided not to.
No, they said no, they couldn't say thirty minutes. She better not break.
Come on, it's one night a week.
But it's, we've been here since six and it's 10:30, so I hope it's short.
Well, you know, when we're long-winded, everybody's got something to say. It has been gruesome.
I don't really think we're going to prove it. They still too new.
I don't think it'll just tend to stir too much negative controversy.
I've been trying to, I don't want it to be the next trial that ends up in Pontiac. Like, very true. Understand the concept, but technically, the original agreement for the white lanes, you tried for, I think, a year, and then if you didn't like it, they take that.
Yeah, but that wasn't true. They got that money to do that work because they were going to put those black lanes in. I was, I was a part of that. They lied because they got the money.
Because it's still the county, it's still the county sheriff's office, so how much say do we have, what they use?
Well, if we don't have any say, then, you know, like...
It's just like the state said, okay, we put you a white lane for $20 million, we got to keep it now. And the county say the same thing.
They, I don't know, I don't know who put that out there, but that money, that road was paid for because they got funding for it because they were going to put those black lanes in. I don't know where it's coming from, that it was, it was a trial. It was never a trial.
It came from the council, yes it did. Council announced it, it's a trial, I was here when it is. They announced it, it's a trial, we don't like it, we can have it removed, until they came up and said, no. Unless you're giving us a...
I know, it's hot. I know, it's hot.
Sabaro's?
No, understood completely. Yeah, yeah, don't do, let's not do it in the morning, we can do it after the...
I had to use the restroom.
Oh, check it.
Yeah, I had to use the restroom. Yeah.
We are back from recess, recess being exhausted.
It gets late.
We are now at public comment. Mayor Pro, again, I'm sorry, some cities have, they're different kind of pro tem. Council President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington, you have the floor.
Mr. Kenny Anderson.
Good evening, and the struggle for Black democratic human rights continues. The topic of my address this evening is, I got credibility to speak on Black violence. Let me begin my public comments this evening by stating to you, Mayor Grimal, your establishment of a City of Pontiac Violence Prevention Commission was long overdue. Your move was an urgent necessity. You've initiated an entity that addresses a critical concern of violence that affects all city residents, particularly the Black community, being impacted by violence super disproportionately. You've done what previous Black mayors unfortunately did not do. Now let me address what I find unacceptable about the overall political and community response to the killing of Araya Jackson. One can ask, who is Kenny Anderson to say what's not satisfactory? Yes, Kenny Anderson can say something about it. I have well over 30 years of leadership, activism, advocacy, and programming to reduce Black-on-Black male violence in Pontiac. I got skin in the game. I have credibility to speak on. I passed out an Oakland Press guest opinion article that I wrote about Black male violence in 1991, over 30 years ago. What I found that was unsatisfactory, unacceptable to me, were the so-called leaders and activists who attended the town hall on violence, who came up with eight key strategies to reduce violence. Not one key strategy highlighted Black males. How can there be no mentionings of Black males when those involved in killing Araya Jackson were young adult Black men? Do you talk about child neglect and not identify children? I would say 90% of the homicides in Pontiac the past 30 years were Black men. Do we realize, based on CDC, Center for Disease Control, that although Black boys and men ages 15 to 34 make up just 2% of America's population, they were among 37% of gun homicides, a rate 20 times higher than white males the same age group? During this pandemic, COVID-19 has been twice as deadly for Black males 15 through 44. However, it was far less of a threat to them than homicides. In closing, Black males were not mentioned as an effective strategy, resource, as a major factor in decreasing Black male violence. For decades here in Pontiac, Black men have taken the lead, have united against violence, involved in anti-violence initiatives and mentoring programs. These men include the names of deceased ancestors like Bob Kaiser, Uberdah McConner, Hugh Jackson, Robert Price, Frank Russell, and Sam Brady. Black men like Rashid McConner, Quincy Stewart, Ken Corr, Bill Maxey, Bob Bass, Clyde Alexander, and Sam Scott. Younger brothers like Max Main, Darius Joyner, Cisco McKinney, Maurice Dollar Mahone on the South Side, and others. I salute all of them. The struggle continues.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark?
I know it's late, you guys, so I'm going to try to go as quick as I can. Good afternoon. This is, this is on a personal level. I'm a resident of Pontiac. I have two concerns. The first concern that I have is about the Gurge Fund. Very, very, very concerned. We have the City of Pontiac for eight years, has been denying the Gurge Fund any opportunity, and this is about putting that money in escrow. We have Visa, Visa who's also has been denying retirees' money for eight years, at least eight years and plus. Then we have the Surge Fund also, who's been denying the money for the people for eight years. So you've been back and forth with the Gurge Fund and the retirees on what to do for them. But my concern is this, you turn around, and the main people that you've been arguing with for eight years, you turn around and place the money in their hands anyway, for whatever reason that you thought that you had to do that. Patrice Waterman was on the council for those years, and she did not, in the last two months, come forward to even give help for the council, to give them instruction on how to proceed with this problem. I find that very offensive. I find it offensive not only for my mother, but for other retirees and all retirees. That's the first thing. So I want to say to these retirees, as sad as it is that you may think, you cannot, and I repeat myself, not once but twice, you cannot put your faith in the council and in our mayor on your money on putting that money in escrow. You have to get off your bus and now try to find a strategy to let the Gurge Fund hold that money until other things can be done, number one. Number two, we talk about the City of Pontiac. Now, there's people in this room, I'm not talking about the people who's been here two, three, six, seven, eight, nine years, I'm talking about the people who was born, raised, and people older than me, and some a little younger than me. I'm 67. So therefore, people older than me that's been here in Pontiac and saw the change, we are saddened. You're not listening to us. You're not listening to the voice of those people. I understand you have a challenge ahead of you. I understand that the past administration, according to the mayor, he has says it's been an incompetent administration. But what do you expect the people to think at this point, when you still have the same old administration in your office today? You're sending out mixed messages and confusing messaging. So please, listen to what the people have to say. You may not agree with it, and you probably may not even like it. I understand, but guess what? Please listen.
All right, thank you. Ms. Veronica Taylor?
Good evening, council, mayor, and city home, and people out there in TV land. First, I would like to thank God for life, and I want to thank all you all that's been praying for me to get better. That's first I want to say. Secondly, I want to talk to you all about the Oakland County Prosecuting Attorney Office. And I want to commend you all for up here talking to them about us about to get them cameras. That really hurt my heart to know about these cameras coming and how they supposed to do, which all, and I'm glad y'all are investigating and asking serious questions. And see, it's whoever writing them policies for those cameras, do they look like us as Black people writing them policies? Because right now, I have four young men that I'm trying to help get home from hard work, out of hard-working mom service, for facial recognition right now. So I'm proud of you all up there, asking them those hard questions, because it's very important, because Pontiac, I live here, have a brother that was born and raised here. I have three nephews that have been in trouble here doing that. So to say, I'm proud of you all for just doing just that, asking them hard questions. Secondly, Councilman Rutherford, to answer a question that you asked that young, those people there, what will happen and what all open to? The prosecuting attorney has it where now, in her office, she asked me to help put a racial board together, and I did with getting a whole lot of our own people here in Pontiac to be on that council board. So to say, she has a policy, if you got a felony or any charges, feel free to come in her office, make appointment, where you cannot go to jail. So our own councilman that sits up here, William Parker, is on that board with us. So to say, it's things that our Oakland County Prosecuting Attorney is doing for the young people, for you not to go to prison, as for African-American men's, her office is open to you all. And as I go for my district, for District 7, with my president, councilman, I talk about that every day at our council meeting. So to say, I'm asking you all, please investigate, because I'm tired of watching our African-American people and people in general go to prison. And to say, it was a beautiful thing this month of April of bringing home people from prison, and we got a bill, trying to get petitions signed for the good bill to help those come home. Please sign it. And as these pastors here in this church is doing a redemption around here in Pontiac, I want to take my hat off to them and thank them for doing just that. And we thank our own Mr. Peyton Keon Peyton for doing a marvelous job, and Pastor McDonald, I mean, Pastor Talbot for preaching on redemption last Sunday, and I think New Springfield have one coming up soon. Am I right or wrong, Pastor Parker? And I thank you all. So feel free to call the prosecuting attorney office and help them help our people stay free out here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. James Sabish?
James Sabish, have a good day. Rest. I pass.
Mr. Larry Jasper?
Oh, hell. This ain't good.
I just want to say, I appreciate everything you've done, going through all these contracts and the deals that you've been looking at and being specific and checking out everything as it's gone. Ironically enough, I bring up the Global Settlement Agreement and the city's contract, which is a living document. What that means by being a living document is that it goes on until it's over. That GSA is on for seven years. You have a promissory note that you owe, and you pay $82,000 a month. You have other things that are in there, too. The definition of a living document means that it can be changed as necessary. In paragraph 6-8 of your GSA, it states, if any time the city determines that any of the representations or warranties set... City Council, Mayor, people on the video, thank you for having me today. I just want to say, I appreciate everything you've done, going through all these contracts and the deals that you've been looking at and being specific and, and checking out everything as it's gone. Ironically enough, I bring up the global settlement agreement and the city's contract, which is a living document. What that means by being a living document is that it goes on until it's over. That GSA is on for seven years. You have a promissory note that you owe, and you pay eighty-two thousand dollars a month. You have other things that are in there too. The definition of a living document means that it can be changed as necessary. In paragraph six dash eight of your GSA, it states, "At any time the city determines that any of the representations or warranties set forth above are incorrect or untrue, or in the event that the owner fails to perform any of the covenants contained within the agreement, then in any such event, notwithstanding any contained herein, to this contrary, the city shall have the right to terminate this agreement upon written notice of the owner to which event the entire deposit shall be returned. Anything the city, in addition to any other rights and remedies available to the city, is provided in this agreement." So that agreement isn't done. It can be null and void at any time. According to ten dash F of that agreement, the city, this is six dash eight, terminate in thirty days. So all you have to do is write a written notice in thirty days and it's terminated. And according to the contract in ten dash F, five point four million dollars, well, fifty, fifty-two thousand was added to it because of a breach of settlement agreement in two thousand eight. This was a legal loophole the mayor used to pull the wool over the city's eyes, citizens. Additionally, promissory note, or PIP, is a seller which bought the Purdue School for one dollar, sold to the city for six hundred thousand. That's pretty funny. They're added in as the buyer, so also, the promissory note was said not to be changed. It added one point five million dollars balloon to this city in seven years. That in total, six point six million. We call that white collar crime. You need to null and void that. If we want to take care of the retirees, we simply wrap it into a partnership with little cities, provide them four hundred dollars a month. They share ownership, dividends, et cetera. And everybody needs to seriously look at that, and I'll be back in just a few more minutes, another week. But you need to know all this, and if you're taking a look at this contract, take a look at the one that makes the most reason to the city. There's twenty million dollars additional repairs that you'll have to do to the Phoenix Center, and you're responsible according to the lease agreement. I'll let it go there.
Uh, thank you. Ms. McGinnis, that concludes our public comments. No, her name is not on public comment. Whoa, I'm, I'm, excuse me, ma'am. I don't want to talk back and forth with you, because I'm looking at the sheets right here. No, it has G. Miller on agenda address. All right, we are now at, thank you, President Pro Tem. We are now at closing comments. Mayor Grimal, you have the floor.
I don't have anything to add, and I know it's, uh, getting late, so I'm going to pass this evening.
Clerk Doyle. Councilman Rutherford.
Gotta say something. Uh, good evening. Short but sweet, but I've been here all night. I ain't ate since five o'clock in the morning. I'm gonna use my three minutes to the best of my ability. Um, we know that the crucifixion is coming up every year. We go back and we're reminded about the thirty pieces of silver in Judas. See, Judas was Jesus' homeboy. And Judas was also a thief. And God knew all this, but he still, she, excuse me, Jesus knew all this, and yet he kept Judas on his side. And then Judas showed what he really was, a sellout, an opportunist. And he used thirty pieces of silver. He got thirty pieces of silver. And Jesus, I think Jesus kissed him at the, at the table. Am I right, Pastor Parker? I want to make sure I got this right, because I, I don't get it all. Okay, well, correct. Okay, that's right. And that's why, here's the whole point. I knew I ain't have it right. Here's the whole point. People see different things in different stories. People see different, I, I'm so, see how you just correcting me? Correction is direction to be led. People see different things in different stories. See, people see different things in different contracts. We have got to be open to having an open mind about what is best for the city and not what we like to do sometimes at the mic and what we like to do sometimes here and what we like to do on Facebook, which is grandstand. See, we want to make a moment when we need to become a movement. I say all that because we make mistakes all the time. We have got to be about the city of Pontiac and not about ourselves. The expulsion thing means more to me than anything, because I have a sister that's currently serving time, and when she come home, I've got to try to do everything I can to ensure she has a second chance. So I say that openly because of this. If you know anybody, anybody, anybody that wants to have a better life, a better way of living, and a second chance, please give them that information. It ain't no shame in exposing yourself when you make a mistake, like I just did. Ain't no shame in exposing that you've made, you had shortcomings and you want to make, and you want to do right. I have made mistakes, and God gave me a second chance. On a, on a, um, on a lighter note, the cleanup is going to be amazing. I hope that we have more participants in District One. I thank you, Pastor Parker, for being a pastor and being able to correct me, because I like to be corrected. And on that note, I say good evening.
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District Two.
Uh, the only thing that, uh, can't wait until the next update, because there's standard, uh, meetings, uh, I have a question about speed bumps. I'm trying to wrap up our community projects, uh, list for District Two, and we were told the last council got some money for speed, or some speed bumps allocated to each district. Uh, it seems as though that didn't happen. Uh, just wanted to see why it didn't happen, if that's something that isn't ever going to happen, or if, um, we need to, uh, potentially use some of our community dollars for some removable speed bumps. And that's all I have.
Councilman McHale Goodman, District Three.
Uh, other than the fact that we have our, uh, spring cleaning, uh, our date is the twenty-third, along with everyone else, uh, it will be at North Kiwanis Parks. If you want to help volunteer with the, uh, with that cleanup, uh, please do get involved. Um, but other than that, I have no other comments.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District Four.
I just want to say that, uh, I, uh, want to thank all of the District Four residents who have been calling me. I'm getting more and more calls from the district, uh, sharing their concerns. And, uh, my telephone number is two four eight four two five four six six three. If you live in District Four and you're having an issue, please give me a call, two four eight four two five four six six three, or you can reach out to me at the, uh, uh, my web site for, not the website, but my email address for the city, kjames@poniac.mi.us. Have a great evening.
Councilman William Parker Jr., District Five.
Good afternoon, City of Pontiac. To clarify, Sister Rutherford, the kiss took place in the Garden of Getsemane, not at the table. Uh, to all of those who are available, the district cleanup for District Five will be on the twenty-third of April. It will be, begin at Harrington, I'm sorry, at Galloway Park, and we will go from there. If you have any questions, please give me a call at two four eight seven five eight three zero one nine, or two four eight nine oh four seven one seven eight. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Council President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington.
Wow, I guess I'm gonna be longer than everybody tonight. So I apologize right now. Uh, first, I'd like to thank this community for reaching out to me through social media, uh, cards and calls, offering my family support during these difficult times. But I know that my father is in a better place. Um, also, a special thanks to my fellow council members, uh, Mayor Grimal, Council Emeritus Patrice Waterman, and Kermit Williams, uh, the Skrulls family, the Robinson family, Kano Phillips and the Ascend Foundation, the Board of the Pontiac Panthers, and School Board President Gil Garrett. I sincerely thank you guys for all your calls and the flowers and the, uh, the food that went to my family, um, of doing, uh, this past week. Second, I have planned a, a District Six Community Meeting for Thursday, April the fourteenth. Again, Thursday, April the fourteenth, from five PM to six thirty PM at the Word Believing Christian Center at one fifty-six University Drive, which is located in the sixth district. Uh, this is Pastor Cornelius and Cassandra Berry's Church. So I sincerely thank those pastors, uh, for giving me the opportunity to host our community meeting there. Third, the annual community cleanup in the sixth district is Saturday, April the twenty-third, beginning around nine AM to about one PM. We will start in the Charlie Harrison Park. I am asking my neighbors throughout the sixth district to embrace the spirit of working collectively to clean our dern streets. I'm asking to a doppa street or even a half a block, a corner where, uh, debris builds up. And we cannot do this, the council cannot do this, the city cannot do this by ourselves. Uh, we have a lot of, of corporations that are coming in from outside communities. And I'm, I'm gonna say this again, because it's hard for me to ask outside communities to clean our city. That bothers me. It's been bothering me for twelve years now. So I'm asking this community, which I call home, I'm asking my neighborhood, which I call my neighborhood, um, to get involved in your neighborhood. Just, just go to your street and clean up that street. Call me. I'll pick up the bags. I can be reached at three one three three one eight seven seven four five. I have a truck. I will throw it on my truck. You don't have to deal with it after you pick it up. So call me. Um, and I know we can do this as a community. And I commend, uh, organizations like We Care Neighborhood Association, uh, GM Housing, uh, Neighborhood Association, Friends of the Pontiac Parks, who have been doing this work, as well as the Cotters, um, Micah Six. I know all these names, because I worked with each of everyone for the, over all these years, and they've been doing these parks. So it's time up for our community to actually help as well. We need that. Our children need clean, public places to play. And if you seen, uh, these parks, after the winter, you see beer bottles, alcohol, any kind of bottles, right? Needles. It's, the parks are unsafe right now. So we definitely asking for more, more volunteers from this community. And good night.
Thank you, sir. And, uh, again, we reiterate our condolences, the entire, uh, Pontiac City Council, but the Pontiac community on the loss of your beloved father. Thank you. Uh, the next Eastside Community Meeting, uh, for District Seven is Monday, April eleventh at seven PM, held at Prospect Missionary Baptist Church, three fifty-one Prospect Street. Where? District Seven. Uh, so please join us. All are welcome for the Eastside Community Meeting. An update, uh, that the Pontiac teenager who had been reported by her family is missing for more than a week, had recently been found safe. Uh, so Jada Lindsay, we are glad that you are safe and wish you and your family well moving forward. Oakland County residents, of which Pontiac is the most important of Oakland County residents, um, we can get a free rabies vaccine, not for us, but for, uh, our canines. So with the purchase of a dog license at the Oakland County Animal Shelter and Pet Adoption Center, which is located in Pontiac, um, every Tuesday in April, no appointment is necessary. That's nine AM to eleven thirty AM. And for the sake of time, I'll forego my final announcement, which is that Habitat for Humanity Oakland County is offering assistance with exterior home repairs for many neighborhoods in District Seven. So at future meetings, including at the Eastside Community Meeting, I'll, I'll offer more details on that. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn this evening? Support. It's been moved by Rutherford, seconded by Goodman. I want to celebrate those residents who are still with us this evening. Your love and, and interest and investment in Pontiac shows with your perseverance of time. Uh, but I also want to celebrate the City Council, who not only puts the time in at the City Council meetings, but all the meetings that you don't see and, and interaction and a lot of legwork. And so I hope everyone sleeps in. Roll call on adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Seventy-eight, so nice.
That motion carries to be standard adjourned at ten fifty-nine PM.